Good evening and welcome. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner. We have some folks here in the room with us. Good to have some people here. And also, we are on Zoom. We anticipate Paul will be here. You'll probably bring him over.
I'm here. Hello.
Can you hear us now, Paul?
Yes, I can hear you now. I'm back.
Dandy, we can hear you too. Public access to this meeting does not ensure there will be public participation unless required by law. We have three public hearings this evening that will include an opportunity for public comment related to the subject of those hearings. For the record, I will now confirm attendance of Planning Board members. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Paul Alpert.
Present.
Arty Crocker.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
The record will note that Natasha Spata is unable to attend this meeting. We'll ask her to watch the video for this meeting and to do those other things necessary to ensure her ongoing participation in the proceedings of the subject matter before us tonight. For our planning staff, we note that our Planning Director, Lee Newman, is unable to be with us. And yet, we do have Alex Clea, our Assistant Town Planner. Good to have Alex here to help us this evening, as every other night. Very good. So recorded. For those participating in this meeting, please be aware that anything you share will be a matter of public record, and others will be able to see you. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I will introduce each of the speakers on our agenda. After they conclude their remarks, Board members will be asked for any comments, questions, or motions. We have additional ground rules governing our public hearings, which I will review momentarily. Our first agenda this evening is... The first item on our agenda this evening is a continued hearing on major project site plan special permit number 2022-03 in respect of an application by Wellbelle Four Needham Landlord LLC regarding the property located at 100 West Street. The petitioner will be submitting additional materials to revise and update its application, and town departments will have an opportunity to provide additional comment. We will take a motion tonight to continue the hearing. We will also have an opportunity for people to speak tonight, but it's not going to be an extended period of time for public comment because we still have to receive additional materials, and we have a pretty full agenda. But learning from a prior mistake that I made earlier in the year, we will still have an opportunity for public comment tonight. If for whatever reason we've run out of time tonight, or if you or friends at home are not able to speak tonight, we can always email your comments and questions to the Board. We do read those and consider those as part of our deliberations. Our email address is planning@needhamma.gov. For the record, we have received an email dated October 17, 2022, from Colleen Schaller, Chair of the Board of the Council on Aging, noting that the council unanimously passed a motion opposing any special permit in respect of this project at 100 West Street, the then-current proposal, current as of October 17, which did not include independent living. We also received an email from town meeting member Kim Nichols at 12 Crescent Street dated September 21, urging the Planning Board not to vote for the special permit and asking that the building be mainly independent living apartments. We received an email dated today from Glenn Mulno, a town meeting member at 40 Morton Street, which is right around the corner, almost really across the street from this site, and a town meeting member as well, opposing the proposal and requesting the Planning Board reject the current proposal. And finally, we received a letter from Attorney Evans Huber, who represents the petitioner. That letter was dated December 15, and it explained the now revised proposal together with an updated first-floor plan. With us tonight for the petitioner by Zoom is Attorney Evans Huber. In our room here with us, we have Chris Yetman from Welltower. I believe we also have Aubrey Holmes from Welltower by Zoom, and we should also have Ralph Riggs and possibly Julie Nash from Balfour via Zoom.
I didn't see Julie Nash.
So I'm not surprised. I think she had another activity, but when that activity ends and she jumps onto our Zoom, if you could please keep an eye out for...
Aye.
Her name is Julie Nash. That will be helpful. Evans, would you like to present your client's updated proposal?
I see myself twice on the screen.
One of them is the Needham Channel B.
Double the pleasure, Evans. Double the pleasure.
Double the nightmare. So, yes, thank you. So as I indicated in the letter, which I sent on December 14, which was intended to just be a very brief summary and update, we... The applicant is intending to revise its proposal to include nine independent living units on the southeast corner of the building on the first floor. And those have been chosen for a couple of reasons. One is that they are sort of physically segregated and all in one corner of the building, and that corner of the ground floor happens to have its own entrance. So for independent living residents in that corner of the building, if they wanted to simply go in and out of their own IL entrance, they could do so if for some reason they didn't want to come in through the main entrance where the AL residents are. But they are of course free to use the main entrance on the backside of the building where the main lobby is and some of the amenities are. And they can walk through there and then walk to the southeast corner of the building. And there's a way to access the units from that route as well. So that... And then each of these ground floor units has its own patio. So we thought those were good, you know, a good reason for the IL units to be located there. The other reason that we chose that location and those particular nine units is that under the Avery Square overlay district bylaw, the requirement of affordable units only applies to developments with 10 or more independent living units. The applicant is not planning to have affordable units in this building, and that is the reason that we had previously made and will continue to be willing to make the contribution of $1.9 million to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or such other use as the town sees fit. So that's a very rough outline of what we are proposing to amend our application to reflect. That will require some updated filings on our part, revised floor plan for the first floor, an update to the parking and traffic analysis, some relatively minor changes to some of the elevations. Mr. Yetman is here. He's not from Welltower. He's from HYM, but connected to Welltower, obviously. And he has a drawing of the floor plan of the first floor, so we can discuss that in greater detail if you would like to see that. So this shows... Chris, do you want to discuss this, or would you like me to?
Are you able to zoom in?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you see Jean?
Yes.
I have a big blockhead. See what I did there?
Block.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Chris Yetman with HYM Investments, Development Manager for this project. So I want to start by saying thank you all for your continued patience. As we've gone back to the drawing board, we relooked at this program. We looked at numerous programs, really trying to address all the comments that we've heard to date. And ultimately, where we landed is the inclusion of nine independent living units on the ground floor. They are shown here, as Evans stated, on the southeast corner, so the main entrance here where my cursor is. All of this is amenity space, fitness, pool, many other areas that we've talked about, the great room, the jockey club. These units here, again, ground floor, each one has their own walkout patio. There is an entrance/exit located over here that would lead you directly perhaps to your vehicle. We've got Starbucks, Trader Joe's, so with walkability in mind, we believe these are great units to peg for independent living. You know, throughout the course of our last meetings, we certainly heard a strong desire to incorporate a form of independent living, whereas you're not paying the full boat of assisted living, and there's not the, whether it be additional care or meals, amenities, programming, all of that that would come with the assisted living. And again, as Evans stated, we remain committed to the financial mitigation that we've talked about to date, which could be used at the sole discretion of the town for numerous initiatives within town. So I can zoom in. Nine units. There is one two-bedroom up here, two one-bed plus dens and a host of...
Where is the two-bedroom?
The two-bedroom is this one located right here. So a mix of three different unit types.
And the other's a real one-bedroom.
And then there's two large one-bed plus dens. So really with what could be an office space.
Do you have the square footage of those? What does that mean, square footage?
I do. The one-beds are averaging 760,000 square feet. The one-bed plus dens are about 950, and the two-bedroom is a little larger than, we'll call it 975. So 760, 950, and 975.
And is that to the right of your cursor where the pool is and the fitness center?
Yes.
There is an entrance if you go directly... There's an entrance there, and then there's also another entrance, the main entrance, I think.
So this would be the main entrance, correct? Concierge, this is the entry...
Lobbyway, all of the amenity space. This is direct access out to Highland.
And the assisted living and independent living units would all have shared access, equal access, to all of the amenities on that first floor, correct?
That's correct. This wall I'm showing here, everything on plan right, which is really north, this is all the memory care area, so that is separate and secure.
28 units.
28 units, correct. So this is very much the heart of what was assisted living amenity space. And there's other amenities, assisted living amenities on the floors above, which could be accessed by the independent living. But we thought it was important for the independent living to have access to this full host of amenities and also have the walkability in the patios.
And then their ability to tie into those amenities would be on an additional fee basis, or is that model hasn't been determined yet?
They would pay for the independent living unit.
Yep.
And then there could be amenity packages such as meal plans.
Right.
Use of the pool and fitness. I believe that would be certainly included with their rate, but...
Included with the additional rate for the amenities package, not the base rent.
I think the opposite. I think he said use of the pool, et cetera, would be in the base rent, right?
No, he did not say that. Go ahead, please.
Aubrey Tripp, I want to clarify this point. So Tripp has Tripp Riggs with Balfour Senior Living, the operator for this project. Tripp, could you answer that question, please, really on how the pricing will work for the unit and anything additional?
Yes. My understanding was that from earlier meetings, there was a desire to make sure that there was a lower price point. So that lower price point would be offered, and we would need to charge for things with a direct expense, like food and beverage. So in the event that, you know, one of the persons living in the two-bedroom apartment wanted to partake in a three-meal-a-day plan, we would need to figure out a pricing model that would do that. And it's not a... In that scenario, the goal would really be to largely pass overall kind of costs associated with three meals a day, rather than necessarily, you know, some sort of large profit center in that pricing model. If you think about some of the other amenities, you know, the pool, the fitness center, I think so long as that model stays sort of operationally efficient, there would be no need or reason to seek, you know, reimbursement for that. But businesses change and things change, and so if over time we were finding that one of those was costing a lot more or as transactionally aligned as food is for consumption, we would need to figure out a way to reimburse that. But as we sit today, the plan would be, you know, you would charge for food in sort of a normal environment, and we would likely offer some sort of amenity package, you know, at little to no cost to the IL residents.
So what are the amenities on the second and third floor that you're mentioning for the AL units?
Sure. Dining, the main dining room is located on the third floor.
Yeah.
So again, if an IL resident were to purchase a meal package, they'd go up to the third floor.
Okay. Yep. So if I heard you correctly, a food package is an added expense, and the amenities, like those on the first floor here, including participating in any maybe movie night or whatever those other type of programs may be, those are... There's either no fee or a minimal fee as an added to the base rent scenario, depending on how the model works. And if it's free today, it may have an expense tomorrow. Am I understanding that correctly?
You are. The only thing I'd clarify is it's not intended to have an expense tomorrow. The goal is really those things should be consumed to enjoy the property. The only way we would trigger that is if we felt like somehow it was as aligned as food is from a cost perspective, right? Sort of no one would expect to necessarily sit and, at least in the IL wing, you know, have every meal provided. And so if it ended up that transactional, we would figure out a way to be transparent about it, you know, with our residents. We do not have that in any other property right now. So, you know, it is me saying I don't know exactly what the future holds, and so we can't sit here today and say zero forever, but the goal is to align, like an operating expense that is transactionally aligned with the consumption of some product.
Okay.
I'm afraid I'm having a hard time understanding the speaker. I don't know if increased volume would help. I don't know. Am I the only one having that difficulty?
It is low. Yeah, he is a little low.
I think our friends in the booth may be able to boost the in-room volume a little bit.
I can speak up, too. Is that better?
It may be. I'm very... I'm really trying to pay attention, but I cannot seem to catch every word you say.
Thanks for saying something. Is that better now?
I can hear you, what you just said, truly.
Okay.
Maybe also be a tad closer to the mic.
Okay. Hold on.
There's a lot there.
What I want to understand in particular is what you're saying that with regard to the use of the amenities such as pool, fitness room, you know, a little community room to sit in, your idea is to start out without an extra charge, but I don't understand the circumstances under which there might be a charge in the future.
That's a good question. Let's break it into a different sort of aspect or example. For using the pool, as it stands today, I would not expect, unless I am wildly surprised with however the business world changes, I would not expect a charge to use a pool for those IL residents over the, you know, foreseeable future. We, as part of our program, right, sort of engaging and doing things collectively across the property, IL or AL or whatever the case may be, we do go engage with the community. We'll buy tickets to the local, you know, theater outings, the symphony outings, you know, those types of environments. And where that transactional experience happens, where there is a cost for a service provided, we will pass that through to, you know, a resident, you know, typically without markup. The point is not to turn that into some sort of profit center. It's to make sure that it just... That that's the cost of the movie ticket that day. And I wanted to make sure, I think I got a little convoluted there. There's not a path or plan to be charging for, say, the fitness room or the pool that you see on plan south, but if they were to go up to eat three meals a day, we would charge, you know, probably through, you know, our point-of-sale system allows for transactional payment, and we would just allow them to consume a meal, you know, in that sort of fashion. Is that helpful?
Yes, it is. I did not hear you say that maybe there'd be some costs that you don't anticipate now regarding the pool and the fitness center and the community room, that later they couldn't use it without paying an extra charge. You're not saying that.
Yeah, I would be comfortable with that. I don't explicitly see anything there.
May I ask a follow-up question with regard to meals? I'm familiar with North Hill. I know people who live there, and you can go and have a lunch with your friend and just... And pay for the lunch. So can people who would live in the independent living units invite a friend to join them and the residents would have to pay for the lunch there, and, you know, would be two lunches to be paid for? Is that what you anticipate, that people would have that kind of happy arrangement?
I would... I think the answer to your question is yes, but let me clarify. We have the ability to take outside payment for a meal. So if, you know, Chris ends up living in the two-bedroom and I come to visit him, and I want to buy Chris lunch one day, or he wants to buy me lunch, either I can treat Chris, or Chris could treat me as separate transactions. And then the way we do treat the sort of in-house is if Chris wants to, say, charge it to his room, similar to a hotel, which is my personal professional background, that is something we accommodate. If I want to pay with a credit card and say, you know what, thanks for being such a, you know, a great friend and colleague, I can treat him as well.
It is possible for outsiders to enjoy a lunch with residents, and it's possible for a resident who is not part of any meal plan to enjoy a meal now and then.
That's right.
Okay. That was my question, and I think I'm all set then with my question. Thank you.
Okay. Arty, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a clarification. So all the amenities on the first floor, that's for the whole building, correct? The first floor is for the whole building?
The whole building except for the memory care.
Not counting the memory care. Yeah, not counting.
Correct. Yeah, memory care is...
Okay. And... So what was stated, I think it was going back maybe two months ago now, was at that point, it was stated that it was not... You didn't think it was feasible at all to have the dining facilities for the independent living coexist in the same spot as the assisted living, but that seems to be not the case anymore, correct? So now the dining facilities for independent living, they can use the exact same facilities as assisted living, correct?
Yes, they have many... Everything is shared, whereas discussions previously were in and around dedicated amenity space.
Yeah.
For IL and for AL.
Yeah, but it was also... But again, it was also stated that it wasn't possible, that the space didn't allow for that.
I believe what was stated was the ideal program for a large number of IL units and AL units and their requisite amenity and common spaces was very tight to fit in the existing envelope of this adaptive reuse project.
Okay. But the dining facility, I mean, I'm not seeing, you know, we're not seeing the dining facility right now, but that dining facility is situated or the area of that is such that it can essentially handle the whole building, not counting the memory care. It can handle all the units that are in the assisted living and independent living combined.
Correct, because the unit count has not changed.
Because the unit count, but that one, that, I don't know if it's one dining room or two big dining rooms up there, but that can handle the whole count, the whole 123 or something like that. They can handle all of them, whatever the makeup is. It can handle all of them, where before it was problematic. Just wanted to make sure.
It's not that it was problematic.
I would jump in to this, Arty, because I think the implication of your question is, you know, you could have an unlimited number of IL units. I think that the expectation here is that people who want to live in IL setting want to be largely independent. They don't want the amenities that are provided under the AL program, so that's why they want IL units, which would mean that, as Jean said, from time to time, they would, you know, want to go in and have a meal, but it is not the expectation that the people in these IL units will be, you know, all signing up for two or three meals a day.
It may very well be the case that, yeah, and I can certainly imagine that they are not going to sign up as you're intended, not intended is the wrong word, as what might normally happen with assisted living, where even some of those will not necessarily be on the three-mails-a-day plan if you have different... Actually, do you have different plans for the assisted living, whether it be two meals or three meals?
Yes. That was a question that came up last time, and I believe under licensing in Massachusetts for assisted living requires the provision of at least one meal per day, so that would be... That's not optional for the assisted living, but there would be other meal plans above that.
So it's minimum one for the assisted living as required by law, but they can choose then whether it be two or three.
That's correct.
Two or three. Okay. With the independent living, they don't have to have anything at this point. There's no requirement there.
That is correct. They do not have that requirement of one, but they could choose a meal plan of...
What are the amenities on the assisted living floors? Could you just share what the...
Sure. Sure. Above this floor, Mr. Crocker, there's a theater and there's the large dining room.
Here's the second floor and the third floor is after.
And so those amenities, are those... Maybe I missed something here. Are those available to the independent living?
Yes, they are.
They are? Okay. I mean, going to the theater and stuff like that. What is not available to the independent living units?
Well, certainly memory care. So putting that aside...
Yeah, no, that's completely aside. I can appreciate that. So what is not available?
A care package.
A care package.
Which is the difference between a licensed unit and an unlicensed. So these independent living units are unlicensed, and that's directly in response to what we've heard over our last few meetings, was the ability to have a unit without the additional costs of care and the food and the requirements that licensure puts on.
That's correct.
I have a follow-up question just on that.
Hold on a second, Jean.
Yes.
No, no, we can go with Jean. No, please, Jean, go ahead.
Because when I read Mr. Huber's letter, the one thing that struck me as a caveat that I didn't understand was the... that I didn't understand was the, at the bottom of the first page where it says, and that they will have the option of participating and additional cost in the dining options and other amenities available to the AL residents, although we talked tonight, there wouldn't be additional cost. Then there was the phrase, "as state licenser allows," and I think now I understand what you're saying is they would not have the assistance care package, or whatever, wrong phrase maybe, because that's what is licensed and they would not have that.
I would say there's sort of two ways of looking at that particular point, Jean. Not only, not only would they not have it, but the IL residents not have it, but my understanding is that Balfour would not be able to provide it. If residents in the IL units needed care, they would have to either move into a licensed unit or an AL, in other words, licenses an AL, or obtain their own care from outside.
Oh, thank you. That's, okay.
Paul, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time. I'm going to hold off until we get the further documentation that Mr. Huber referenced and probably a further presentation and hearing from, hearing from the public.
Mr. Chair, although I have no further questions, I do have a comment. Is it appropriate to make it at this time?
Sure.
I very much appreciate this cooperation and coming up with the independent living units. However, a very important aspect of this project has been the provision of some affordability. And I understand that nine units was chosen, and also this happened to be a pretty good location for that, for that wing, because that, then you wouldn't meet the 10-unit threshold. I want to see one of those units be affordable, and I think it would be reasonable to have a proportionate reduction in the amount of money paid to the town. I took the 1.9 million that's proposed to be paid to the town and divided it by nine, which was the number of affordable units, and that's $211,000. So I'm talking about something in that ballpark to be reduced, the amount of money paid to the town, but that there would be one affordable unit. I think that's very important to the town. Just want to put that out on the table.
I have some further comment to that, but I'll wait until we see what other comments we have from the public. So at this point, I'd like to open, yeah. Yes, Paul?
So, so since Jean raised that issue, I did have a question about where the select board is with regard to that agreement, because last I had heard, the select board had tabled it and hadn't taken it up again. And I don't know what the select board's thinking is now. That's, that agreement is not something that we're participating in, that's a select board issue. And although I appreciate Jean's suggestion, that whole agreement is on the select board's plate, not our plate. So I don't know how much control we have or how much influence we have on making, making changes to that agreement. And so my, and so my question to Mr. Huber is, has, since, since the last time we had a hearing, has there been further discussion with the select board? Or basically, what's the status of that agreement?
So the status of that agreement is, it's on hold. You know, we had asked, as a board as well, where we had asked for a couple of continuances to look into various possibilities here, and during that time, my only communications with this, with this select board was, we don't know what's going to happen here, so please don't take any action on that agreement one way or the other. So they've just tabled it for the moment. That's its status at the moment, it's been tabled. We are, you know, there are various aspects of this project that are in flux, or this proposal that are in flux, so at the moment, I do not think there is any explicit intention for them to bring that agreement to a vote, but I don't know.
I ask, if I may, a follow-up, Evans. Would you intend, subject to whatever decision we seem to be leaning towards, do you intend to enter into that agreement with the select board?
Well, yes. I mean, as we indicated in my letter, that's our, that's our, you know, we're well aware that it's, you know, for Ms. McKnight and perhaps others, that, you know, there's a desire to have affordable units on-site. Ms. McKnight has made that very plain tonight and other nights. That's not Welltower's intention, and so we wanted to, you know, not reneg on that offer of 1.9 to the town, so I'm not sure if this is answering your question, but we certainly do not intend to take that off the table.
So at this point then, unless there's any further comment from my colleagues, I'd like to open up to the, to public comment, and I'd just like to remind before we do that we have these ground rules to provide for public comment in a respectful manner for all of us. Please address your remarks through the chair, please state your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep your remarks to three minutes. It's just as effective to simply say that you agree with a previous speaker instead of repeating a previous comment. We'll cycle through public comments and questions on a rotating basis between this room and with, and on Zoom. And given the tightness of time, I don't think tonight will allow for a second time for someone to speak, but we will allow you to speak again at our continued session, which I think may be January 17th. I think is when we'll probably take a, we'll take a motion to continue this to, I think January 17th, we'll have to pick a time certain. Your questions may not necessarily be answered as they come up unless the answer's immediately available either by board members, the staff, or the participants. Otherwise, we'll ask staff to note the question so we can address it. And with that, I see we have a hand up on Zoom. Alex, if you're able to bring Daniel Goldberg over, that will be helpful. And then while we're doing that, for others in the room that are wishing to speak on this subject, I will come back to you once we're.
Do you want me to start now, or am I connected?
Yes, we can hear you, we cannot see you. If you have video and you want to turn it on.
Yeah, I have video, oh yeah, I see it, yeah. Okay. Hi, my name is Dan Goldberg, 188 Tudor Road, Yoniedum. And I think the only issue that, we're talking about meals and everything, I think, I'm also a member of the Council on Aging, which submitted the letter that we were unanimously opposed without independent living. I think the one issue that hasn't been raised is, I think when the public spoke, that no one imagined they would come back with only nine units of independent living. I think the public is less interested in the payment to the town and more interested in independent living, and that, the board had not, didn't ask one question about why only nine units. I got the affordable issue, but nine seemed like a really minimal number to sneak this proposal through. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone in the room, like to state, have a seat, please, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair.
Joshua Levy.
1606 Great Plains Ave. I have two questions about process on this application. First, my understanding is that the application is under the exclusive jurisdiction of the planning board.
Could you speak up, Josh?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you, just.
Okay. Oh, no, so my understanding is that the application's under the jurisdiction of the planning board, though I understand the select board may have negotiated an agreement.
So, it's a good question. The app, well, the application before us is only before us, and it's to us exclusively to vote on the relief being sought and on the, and on the decision for the, for the proposal as it's revised. So that's exclusively for us. And as to the municipal benefits agreement that has been negotiated substantively between the select board and the petitioner, that's exclusively with the petitioner. The planning board doesn't have a role in that negotiation. So for instance, Jean's comment, you know, you know, Jean, I would suggest that you, you know, make the comment directly to the select board, so they have your comment. They obviously will hear it, you know, from these proceedings, but the planning board is not doing that for several reasons. If you want, I can explain it, but otherwise, it's really for the, you know, the jurisdiction of the select board.
Okay, thank you. So my second question and last question, will the planning board, in its consideration of this application for special permit, take into consideration that municipal benefit agreement for 1.9 million dollars?
I think we, we will, and we, we may make it a condition, it's possible we might make it as part of our conditions, that that agreement, if it hasn't been, either be signed or that it's executed, and if it's executed by the time that our decision is complete and signed off, then it'll be made as a finding and not necessarily as a condition, because it's been found that they've been, you know, it's been fully executed.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. Colleen Schaller, Avon Circle, Yoniedum. I'm board chair of the Council on Aging, and I just wanted to clarify a statement by Mr. Goldberg. The board has not met to discuss this new proposal, but definitely will, and will have a lot to say about it, I'm sure. So I just want it known that at the next public hearing, we will be sending either another letter or we'll be represented and make our statement at that time.
Okay, so specifically to respond to that point, I'm not sure if you heard or not, but I think we anticipate taking this up again. We have to confirm with, with Mr. Huber, but I think it's probably going to be January 17th.
Yeah, I wrote that date down, so.
Good, good. So, and I would recommend having your comments into us prior to the Thursday before.
Okay.
So the Thursday is the magic day that typically Alex sends around her package, and instead of having the comment come the day of, we would rather you submit your comment, I guess, before January 12.
Okay. I believe January 12th is our, is our board meeting, so I'll have to.
All right, I understand.
I'll have to do something about that.
Well, if that's when the board naturally meets.
It is.
We'll, we'll update the package for you. So we appreciate, you know, your council's deliberation discussion, and we welcome your feedback and comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment on that? I've been on this board now for seven or eight years, and we've, we've had the rule that we've requested comments be in, in time for our packet to go out the Thursday before. And people have been good about that. And if we get a comment on, on Friday, that can generally give us time. Our staff receives the comment and they can get it out to us, if not that day, over the weekend. This is a volunteer position. We have other lives, we have other jobs. I find it incredibly frustrating to be receiving comments and letters the day of the hearing, especially when they arrive, say, after five o'clock the day of the hearing. My office is in downtown Boston. I generally have to leave my office by 5:00, 5:30, in order to be in Yoniedum in time for the hearings. If somebody submits something the day of the hearing at 5:00, I don't get to see it. I don't get to think about it. And I appreciate Ms. Schaller's comment that they're going to meet on the 12th. They, they could very easily get a comment to us. The 17th is a Tuesday instead of a Monday, that, that will help, so that if they could get their comment to us the next day, certainly no later than hopefully early Monday, that would be greatly appreciated. As I said, I find it incredibly frustrated, frustrating to be receiving things in the afternoon of the day of the hearing, when, when, when we're supposed to be giving thoughtful consideration to the petitioners and to all, all commentators. And so I, I wanted to get that off my chest. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to do that.
Sure, thank you, Paul.
There is no doubt in my mind that the decision of the Council on Aging Board will be given to you on the next day, on the, on the 20th, the 18th, excuse me.
Thank you.
I will personally see that you get it.
We appreciate your understanding.
My comment, my comments weren't really directed at you, Ms. Schaller, it, you know.
I know, I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood my position as well.
Thank you very much.
Colleen, would you also be there that night then to also present some additional?
Absolutely.
Personal feedback?
Yes, I will, and hopefully some of my board, which there, I know they're online, but they're not here, so, thank you.
I understand. Thank you very much. Alex, can you please, I see Maggie Abruzzi has her hand up, if you're able to promote her to panelist?
Hi, how are you? It's Maggie Abruzzi, 30 Bridle Trail. I, I wanted to quickly comment on the discussion about when the public should be getting comments into the board. I can absolutely appreciate, Mr. Albert, how difficult it is to receive things as you're trying to get to a meeting and, and not having everything well in advance. I would like to suggest that to remedy that problem, the board require the applicants to have all their materials in a week before. We did not get this packet until late on Friday, or late or midday on Friday. It was so late that I actually emailed Alex to see if there was a new proposal in this 100 West Street matter. So as the public, it's incredibly frustrating to get a new proposal the end of the day on Friday for a hearing that's taking place on Monday, and there's absolutely no way for me to comment on that proposal the Thursday before we even get the applicant's materials. So I just would ask that you back up the applicant's deadline for when they have to submit all of materials, so that the public can be just as informed as the board, because the public would also like to be informed and be able to give effective comments. On the new proposal, I would argue that nine independent living units does not meet the purpose of the overlay district amendment. We've discussed the, the history of how and why this amendment got passed, and under the amendment, the proposal has to meet the purposes, and this doesn't, because it doesn't bring vibrancy to the neighborhood. Nine people walking around going to Trader Joe's is not reviving the neighborhood, and it has zero affordable housing, which was the basis, we were promised nine units of affordable housing. That was why this passed, the amendment passed. That was why this passed, the amendment passed. So, I just wanted to make the comment that this new proposal, although it's improved mildly, does not meet the purpose of the amendment. The Planning Board should not grant a new special permit. It should let the old special permit that had 72 independent living units and nine affordable stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Anyone else in the room wish to speak on this application? Is there anyone, Alex, that you see with her hand up? I recognize also, from the emails that we've received, the great frustration in the community that's been echoed tonight with the, with even the revised proposal, and certainly the previous proposal. And the question that Maggie just raised about vibrancy is really an important question. My understanding, and this is one of the things that we're going to have to deliberate on, is what is the scope of our authority? And specifically, in rejecting an application, we, as I understand it, and already, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that we can only reject an application if there is a, for this special permit, if there is a violation of the dimensional regulations, which this program and proposal does not violate the dimensional regulations of the bylaw. If the proposal as built would violate other parts of the bylaw, and Maggie has just, for instance, mentioned the question of the purpose of the bylaw. And thirdly, whether the, the impacts of the development, the proposal as developed, were too great that cannot be reasonably mitigated. Those are the three basis upon which we would otherwise be able to, I think, reject a special permit. The question of vibrancy is an interesting one. And I certainly recall when my grandmother was in, when we were living in the same town after my grandfather passed away, and they sold their house, they lived five hours away from us, and we moved my grandmother into a, a standard apartment building. And there came a point where she needed some additional care. So, we let the lease go on her apartment, and she moved into a facility that had multiple levels of care and was there solely as an assisted living person. But I still picked her up every Saturday and took her to the synagogue for services. And we did that in part to be together as a family, and in part because afterwards, we would go to the grocery store. And whether I bought her groceries for the week, or she bought her own groceries for the week, she was still participating in the economic vibrancy of the area. When I would pick her up and take her to a movie, she was still, if I got the popcorn and she got the ticket, either way, we were both contributing, and she was certainly contributing to the economic vitality of the community. We'd go to the pharmacy and pick up a script. We'd go, we would go to a play at, sometimes at Neptune Theater. And she would contribute to the economic vitality. And I, I, the purpose of our, noted within our bylaw, does not prescribe a certain ratio or amount of vibrancy. It talks about vibrancy. And I think it's also true that although, that if this were 100% memory care, we cannot say there is no vibrancy. Because even when my grandmother moved to an elevated level of care, we, she, we, we still brought her flowers, we still brought her meals in, and we still participated in community events however we could. And I can't say that she was not part of the, the vibrancy of the community, although she wasn't able to physically leave the building. So, if the building was entirely memory care, there are still employees, and there are family members and friends that are continuing to visit, and they are continuing to contribute to the economic vitality of the area. So here, we have a program which is not just memory care. There are many units of assisted living. And the Planning Board had anticipated an original program that included a much broader level of independent, independent living with affordable housing. And that's indeed, you know, reflected in the original special permit for this site. And it was a unanimous decision to approve that special permit, which remains. But I think we just have to, as a Board, think very carefully about what the scope of our actual legal authority is under, under our bylaw and under the state statute that governs our practice. And I, and I also think that, I, I worry that in a very funny way, although it's actually very serious and, and it's offensive, there's, I should say, there is no funny thing about this. If we demand independent living, and if that were within our legal authority to do so, and I am absolutely not convinced that it is, it's a question that I'll raise with our Town Council, to speak to us more specifically. But we have to be very careful, because it could otherwise be seen that we are discriminating against people with disabilities, that memory care participants in our society and, and assisted living society, that they don't matter. And I think that it's true, everything that we've heard from, from the public before tonight, and certainly echoed tonight, that there is a great need in the town for all levels of senior housing. That's absolutely true. And thank God, Jean and Natasha have been, you know, leading the town through a years-long effort or more to find Needham in a position to take a meaningful step forward in addressing housing and affordable housing. And there is a time and a place, if there was an easy ability to insist on it, I understand that, but I just think that we have to all be mindful and be careful of what the limits of our authority are. And unless my comments have any other, my colleagues have any other comments, I would take a motion to continue the hearing to August, to, rather, to January 17 at 7:00 P.M.
I definitely would like to comment further.
Okay, good.
Well, I mean, you, you brought up vibrancy, and you keyed on that for, you know, quite a while about the vibrancy. So I think it's important to, to stay on, stay on that and really understand that. Is this, this whole proposal was ushered, you know, by yourself, Mr. Chair, was ushered through, you know, the public to giving the, you know, before it was brought to town meeting, ushered through them, talking about this proposal, talking about the vibrancy, talking about the level of independent, independent living, and was with some affordable housing component, with using vibrancy as the, as a kind of focal point, as part of the whole package, and adding the fourth floor as part of that. I mean, it was all, it was all a package brought together, as far as what this really meant. And I don't think it's, I think it's a little off-putting to think that everyone, anyone would be diminishing people in memory care, assisted living, as not being part of our community. Of course, they're part of our community. And, and to suggest otherwise is kind of, is almost offensive, to be honest with you. It's almost offensive. So they are part of the community. They're, they're a valuable part of the community. They're a valuable part, because we need, we need those types of programs. We need them. We need to transition where our, where, where we're going into society, what we have, what options we have. What do we have for multi-generational living? What do, what do we have for living as far as going from independent to assisted to memory care? It's all part of the whole. And no one's suggesting otherwise, as far as who the, who those people are, where they are in society, and what part of life they are. No one's suggesting they don't matter, and as equally as, as opposed to anyone else. But there is a difference. There is a difference of what we're bringing to town meeting, what we are selling, is that's what happens. You're selling something to town meeting. Here, you're selling this. Here is, here's a package that we want you to vote on, and you're going to get this, and you're selling them on the vibrancy of this package. No, I, do I believe that there's varying, there's varying degrees that could be acceptable? Yes, yes, there's varying degrees, which I think any reasonable person could be defined as vibrant, as a, as this package being a vibrant. It could vary where that window is. This is not, this, I don't believe, is in that window of acceptability. I want to find a way for you, for your company, to make this happen. I do. I think it's possible. One hurdle, one hurdle that I think was overcome, was the hurdle that we had at the, at one of the other, the, one of the first meetings was, where are people eating? You know, it, it sounds like a simple thing, and since, on some degree, it was simple. You know, I talked to people in North Hill after that meeting, saying, I won't say who, but I spoke to the higher-ups and said, what happened? What happens when people are in the independent living, they want, and some friends transition to assisted living? Can they go eat with them? He says, absolutely, they can go eat with them. Which means that where the dining rooms are seem to be kind of wishy, you know, squishy. Well, can I, I guess I'll use the word, I guess I'll use the phrase, you guys have kind of solved it, because here are the dining rooms that everyone can use. And we are going to do some of this independent living, and, and I appreciate that. I understand why you put it, why, why they're there. I understand how you indicate why it's only nine. But we can do better. We can do better. Vibrancy has a window that we were sold, that town meeting, the town was looking for. This, this needs to be better than what it is, is the town is looking for that. The town needs, the town needs independent living. What's interesting is, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair is that the original, I believe the original plan didn't have memory care. In some ways, you could see that almost as a flaw, perhaps that it didn't have memory care as part of the original package. Now, now this, this does. So can we find a way to mesh the two somehow? Make them, make them both work? You know, a, a, a fair, vibrant, independent living combined with a fair, vibrant, assisted living, then yet, then with memory care? Can this building accomplish that goal that the town is voting, that the, not only the town is voting on, but this part of town needs? This is the Needham Heights. It's where I grew up, and I live in more than, more than the square, technically the square area. But this needs that. Yes, the building wants, yes, we don't want to leave the building vacant. That's not, that's not an option anyone is looking for. We're looking for the option of, of what, what the town voted on in getting to that, getting something towards that point. This is intentionally staying below that point, far, far below that point. So you've proven that you can do it. You've proven that you've solved the dining room problem. I know it sounds stupid. In some ways, it was, it was, in my mind, silly. But at the same time, a logistical feat that had to be accomplished. Okay, it was logistics, it has to be accomplished. You can't just throw things up in the air and have them magically work. But you guys, you guys are making that work. Now make something else work. Now make something else work with more independent living, and then have some of the affordable housing. People, people will apply you for that. And you can do it. It's a choice. Before, it sounded like it wasn't a choice. It was like you can't, you can't do it, you just can't make it work. But we've proven it can work. So now that, now it's a choice of whether you want to do it or not. The Needham, the Needham wants that, that's what they voted on. That's, I, I think, that's, that's what I think, what you got out of the Planning Board, at least, most of us last time, was we wanted something closer to what, closer, or, you know, exact or closer to what the town meeting voted for, certainly closer. Because then, boy, this would be a hell of a project, then. It would really, the, the Council, the, the Center for the Heights, 120 yards away, Center for the Heights, where the Council of Aging, I believe, is kind of in that building? Across the street, anyway. That's where the, you know, a lot of senior people go. Well, in this building, there will be a fair amount of senior people. And this is the living, could they go there? Sure. But I know a number of people with family members in assisted living, yes, they go there, and they'll take them out and do things, okay? But they have to go there and take them out and do things. That's a great way to merge the, merge the, the generations, to have that, to have that necessity, almost. Independent living will have a little bit less of that necessity. But for, almost for a good reason, is because they're independent, and they have a choice. They have an easier choice to go out there and be part of society, which is right across the street, literally, right across from two streets. That's where, that's where life is. Life is within this building. But we want to, we want to bring vibrancy and life outside of this building. So, I appreciate it. I was a little disappoint, I was disappointed with only this. I was expecting something better. And I think we can get there. And I think it's necessary. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to put my lawyer's hat on and go to our bylaw. And go to my recollection of when this overlay district was proposed. The request, the initial request was that the use be as of right, and this Board insisted that the use be by special permit. And part of the reasoning for that, or actually, my major reasoning for that, was because the criteria for a use special permit are different than the criteria for a site plan special permit, and this Board has more flexibility. And I'm looking at our bylaw. And our bylaw for use special permits is in Section 7.5.2, and specifically having the criteria that we are to consider in Section 7.5.2.1. And Section 7.5.2.1 states that this Board is to consider, in a use special permit, whether the application, and this is now sub-paragraph B, is consistent with, one, the general purposes of this bylaw as set forth in Sub-Paragraph 1.1, and two, the more specific objectives and purposes applicable to the requested special permit, which may be set forth elsewhere in this bylaw, such as, but not limited to, those at the beginning of the various sections. And I look forward to having a discussion about how this is to be interpreted, having that discussion with Town Council. So I, I repeat, we are supposed to be considering whether the application meets the specific objectives and purposes applicable to the requested special permit, which is set forth at the beginning of the various sections. So then we get to the beginning of the Avery Square Overlay District, Section 3.15.1, which specifically says that the purposes of the Avery Square Overlay District are to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community by creating opportunities for housing primarily serving individuals 55 years of age or older who wish to live in independent living apartments and/or assisted living and/or memory loss, within walking distance of goods and services, public transportation, and the civic life of the town, to promote a vibrant, walkable area within the Avery Square Overlay District, and to encourage and allow redevelopment of the existing And to encourage and allow redevelopment of the existing property within the overlay, within the Avery Square Overlay District in a manner that will further these purposes. So, in making my mind up on, on, on this, which I have not done yet, which I have not done yet. I am mindful of section seven point five point two point one stating that we are to consider whether this application as modified is consistent with the general purposes of the bylaw. And specifically with the bylaw as set forth at the beginning of the various sections. And as it specifically relates to the purposes of the district set forth at three point fifteen point one. And, um, uh, that's, Mr. Chair, that's where I believe that we do have the authority to decide whether this application meets the criteria of the purposes of section three point fifteen point one or not. And as I said, I haven't made up my mind. I had made up my mind when there were no independent living units proposed. Um, but I have to, and I'm glad that we're continuing this until January seventeenth so that it will give us time to consider it further. Give us time to get further community input. Give us time to, to see the more specific plans. Um, but I believe that we do have the authority to accept or reject this application based on whether we feel that it meets the purposes as set forth in section three point fifteen point one to encourage what we're calling the vibrancy of the Avery Square area. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, I agree. I see we have, I think, one hand up from Olivia Khan Boshill, uh, from the public. If we could bring her over, and then that will be the last of the public comment, and we'll, uh, uh, deal with the motion momentarily thereafter.
You're muted, Joe.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not on my own computer, as you can see, for Olivia Jill. Okay, so, um, how are you all? Good evening. Um, I just wanted to... I'm Jill Khan. I live at forty-four Brooklyn Street, and I'm a twenty-five-year town meeting member. So, what else? Um, I wanted to say that I don't appreciate that what went to town meeting to vote on is so different from what we now are looking at. Um, I would not have voted in favor, and I've spoken with a number of fellow town meeting members, and they would not have voted in favor of either this proposal or the one from four, five, six weeks ago, whenever the last meeting was. Neither of these would, we, we would have voted on. So that's one, one point. One question I have, and then another comment. A question for the proponent is, why are you presenting something now with, um, only what, zero or one affordable unit versus nine or...
Affordable units, nine independent living units.
Well, zero or one is pretty close. So, um, question for Evans Huber is, why, why are you doing that? Why are you presenting this proposal with only one, I mean, with zero? It's late, and I worked eleven hours today. Um, so why are you presenting this with zero affordable units?
Mr. Chair, do you want me to respond to that?
Sure. If you're able.
Yes. As I said earlier, uh, the, the number of nine was chosen, um, because by coincidence, there happens to be a good place in the building where there are nine units that could be somewhat segregated if the residents choose to remain segregated from the IL population, from the AL population, but also explicitly because of this issue about affordability. If we had whatever number various people who are opposed to this project think is an appropriate number of IL units, any number more than ten imposes on us under the bylaw requirement that, um, uh, twelve and a half percent of them be affordable. If that happens, that is not economic, the project no longer becomes economically viable. I know that there's this, I shouldn't say no. I suspect that there are people who think that developers are ATMs who have unlimited amount of money, and they're just being stubborn or obstinate if they decide that they don't want to do affordable. You know, Aubrey Holmes from Welltower is here, so she can certainly speak to this better than I, but, um, you know, developers make decisions about what they're going to do with a building based on whether or not it's a financially viable project. If you put in X number greater than ten of IL units, you are then going to have an affordability obligation, which is, um, a significant financial obligation. It's, it's the reason, or among the reasons, why the LCB proposal, the former proposal is no longer being pursued. It's not economically viable to do that project. So, you know, things have changed considerably in the two to three years since that project was permitted. Uh, construction costs have gone up, uh, interest rates have gone up, a variety of reasons why a project like this, which becomes very expensive, uh, at, at a point, it becomes no longer financially viable. And so, um, you know, whether, whether people choose to believe it or not, if the board were to say, you got it, you can't, you know, nine's not enough. You gotta have twenty-five and five affordable units, or six affordable units. The result would be that the building just continues to sit empty. Welltower is just not going to do that. And it's not, you know, they're just not going to invest, you know, the huge amount of money that it will, will cost to renovate this building to the standards that Ball for wants it to be, um, you know, for its residents, um, to, in order to create a money losing proposition. So, you know, I think one of the, one of the difficulties that is faced in this kind of discussion is, people will say, hearing that, what I just said, they will say, they might not believe it, or they think it's a bluff. Um, and, um, I, I think that that's an unfortunate, um, just, but I guess somewhat understandable aspect of this debate.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm not sure. Thank you for your response. I wasn't asking, um, anything about a bluff or inferring anything about a bluff, nor was I asking or inferring that a developer is, is, in your words, an ATM. I mean, I, I don't know where you got those comments. Certainly not from my question. I was thinking, why, why we now are looking at zero affordable, and I would not have voted in favor of this. And I wanted to add just one other quick comment, because I know the hour is late, is that, um, one concern I have besides the zero affordable units is, if you saw yesterday's Sunday Globe, because that was the lead, I think it was on the first page, an article that there are huge staffing shortages in nursing homes and in assisted livings, probably and in Massachusetts. I think it said that they've had to close, I don't remember the number of beds. Anyway, it's called Tewksbury, something is the lead, if you want to Google it, you know, the town of Tewksbury, they were focusing on, but it's nationwide and in Massachusetts. So, I have a concern, beside the affordable concern, that having assisted living, many assisted living and many memory care versus having some more independent living is gonna have the staffing shortages, they're closing beds. One fellow who's been in the business forty years, after the Vietnam War, he came home, and he's the main person who spoke, who wrote in this, who was interviewed in this article. So that's how long, if you go back to Vietnam War, he's been in the business. He said he's never seen a situation like this where his, he doesn't know if his businesses, he owns several nursing homes, they're gonna be in existence in one or two years. The staffing shortages are so chronic, people are coming four months, six months, and leaving, they're going and driving for Amazon instead. He upped their pay from thirteen dollars an hour for assistance and nursing care, people who attend to seniors, to twenty-two dollars an hour, and he's still not getting, thirty seconds. Okay, I don't even want one minute, I'll just say thirty seconds. So my main point is, I have a big concern of no affordable units. I also have a big concern about the fact that the staffing shortages in assisted living and nursing homes in Massachusetts is horrible. So I would like to see us back to something closer to what we voted on at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I have a question for Mr. Huber. Uh, Evans, will you have an opportunity to present, uh, to the board your material for, um, uh, I guess, you know, into the board the week of January nine? So it can be distributed to the board for the twelfth, although, like Maggie said, it would be great to be before, but, uh, realistically, would you have all your complete materials available to us by January eleventh?
Well, I'd like to have the staff time to review too, so I think we need at least a week so that I can give it to engineering and other staff to review, at least a week.
So Evans, let's talk about your timeline here. It's the nineteenth. What's your plan on being able to, uh, present your absolute final revised materials?
I was, um, well, first of all, I didn't know what, what, what hearing you were gonna be proposing to move it to. I knew it was gonna be January, but, um, or I assumed it would be January, but, um, you know, I, I guess I would, um, on the one hand, I would say, from my lay perspective, the changes that are needed are, to the drawings and so forth, are not major. On the other hand, I know, for example, that we need to do an updated traffic study, and, you know, I don't want to sit here and, and Mitch Aaron Fredette to, you know, creating that between now and January eleventh. Maybe she can, maybe, I, but I just don't know for sure. And I, given the intervening holidays, I don't want to assume that she can. If we had three full working weeks with no holidays, I would say that's probable. But I am not a hundred percent confident that we can do all that by January eleventh.
Okay, so...
And, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Jean.
And also, you had suggested to me that I can't very well, uh, speak of, in order to make the project economically viable, um, a reduction in the amount of the agreement that the select board has negotiated without, uh, speaking with the select board about that. So I would have to approach the, uh, town manager and ask to be on the agenda for a select board meeting in order to discuss that, uh, whether the select board are willing to agree to a reduction that's in proportion. And we have, um, our, uh, housing specialist, uh, able to advise us on a proportionate amount. And so that, if you really think that I need to do that before we come back, we have to arrange a timing on that too.
Okay. Mr. Chair, is there a meeting of the, of the planning board on January thirty-one?
Uh, not currently, no.
Uh, when?
No. We intend to meet on the third and the seventeenth, and then I guess, not the two weeks, but on the seventh of February?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, it's on the, it's on my calendar for February seventh.
And two.
I mean, where, where I appreciate, I mean, Jean, I appreciate, you know, what you're saying and where you're coming from and so forth. I'm a little apprehensive that we, as a planning board, are getting, you know, just a little apprehensive, we, as a planning board, are getting into, I guess, payments, getting into those talks as payments to the town for what our decisions may be. I don't know how often, if that's ever happened before. I'm just a little apprehensive about that, Jean. Spurs. You know, we'll, we'll allow you to do that if you pay us that, if you pay us X.
Well, alternatively, uh, we could go ahead with that proposal, uh, but it would be an if, if the select board agrees.
Right.
And there wouldn't be any prior discussion with the select board about that.
Right.
So whatever you want, I, I thought I was getting a direction that I should meet with the select board, but if that's not the case, um, then I'll just wait and see.
I suppose alternatively, you could, we could have Lee speak with Kate, you know, to, you know, to raise the, to raise the comment and have the select board, you know, conduct their, uh, discussions accordingly. But let's, with that in mind, focus on a date here. I think, Evans, it might be the sta, Town Department's Alex is absolutely right to raise that, will need time to respond.
I think, when I say a week, I mean a week to give us comments. So not a week before the meeting, that gives them two days for comments.
Yes.
I mean a week to turn around comments.
Yeah. So, thank you for clarifying that. So, so Evans, it sounds like...
If you're saying, if you're saying that you need our materials two weeks prior to the hearing, then I think January seventeenth is not realistic.
So, is February seventh or February, uh, uh, twenty-four, uh, sorry, the wrong month in front of me. February twenty-first or February seventh?
February seventh, I would say.
I apologize.
It's seventh to the twenty-eighth in February, I believe.
Yeah, February, February seventh, two weeks prior to February seventh would be, um, what, like January twenty-fourth?
Fourth of January.
Yeah, we can, can, we can get our, our materials in by then.
Okay, I, I'm still stuck on, on this other date. So we have, so we have... So we're not meeting on the twen...
If you moved, if you moved the year...
Evans, hold on, just give me a second, please. Um, so I'm surprised that we go from the seventh to the twenty-eighth, and we don't have anything on the twenty-first.
Because the twenty-first is school vacation week, Adam. We don't usually meet during school vacation.
You'd think with a kid in school, I'd know that. Okay, Evans, continue, please.
All I was gonna say was, February seventh, with the understanding that we'll submit our materials by January twenty-fourth.
Uh, Alex, is that okay for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So can I have a motion to continue this hearing to February seventh at seven P M?
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion by already, second by Jean.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, did we have to do that early in the evening?
Was it seven, was it seven?
We needed to be at seven o'clock? Gonna be seven fifteen or seven thirty?
Well, we start our meetings at seven.
We didn't tonight.
Well, that was a special circumstance. Every other meeting, for a while, has been seven.
For this particular article, for this article, Paul, do you want to just start this article later, within that same meeting constraint?
Well, even if we call the meeting for seven o'clock, we usually have some discussions before we get to the first hearing. I would suggest that we schedule this. I make the motion that we, um, continue this hearing to February seventh at seven fifteen.
We have already a motion on the floor.
Well, I...
I, I can amend that to seven fifteen then. I'll just amend my motion to seven fifteen then.
Okay.
And I second that amended motion.
So we have an amended motion to continue the hearing to, uh, February seventh. Is that right? February seventh at seven fifteen P M?
Yes.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing now, it'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we're a continued. Thank you all very much. Next, uh, on our agenda is a hearing originally for eight o'clock, an hour ago. Two hearings, uh, uh, both in respect of, uh, nine twenty South Street, one for a definitive subdivision plan, and the other for, uh, um, with respect to the Scenic Road Act and the Public Shade Tree Act. And, uh, with us, uh, tonight, uh, for this, uh, is the petitioner, uh, Brian Connaughton, as counsel attorney, George Jenta. And is, uh, the surveyor engineer, Vern Porter, available? He's not available tonight.
Yeah, I brought him over, he should be over.
Okay. Uh, George, is there anyone else with you?
Nope, that's it.
And then...
He is here as well.
And Ed Olson from, uh, our department... And Ed Olson from our Department of Parks and Forestry is here. Thanks, Alex. And then in the audience is Dr., is it?
Aleve.
Dr. Sergey Aleve, who's in a butter. But I'm going to first start, I guess, with you, George, if you're ready, would you like to begin?
Just give me a few minutes so I can...
Set up your technology?
That's right.
Okay.
As soon as I get George over, I'm just going to run and get a tissue. A box, a whole box.
Couple from Artie, he might show.
I've already taken some, but I, no, you deserve your own box.
Yeah, why don't you keep the box here, I'll take a few, man.
Okay.
There you go.
You're very kind.
It's winter.
Just the season.
Almost winter.
It's meteorological winter. That started December 1st.
Ah.
Get some Morant, it's winter.
Getting ready?
Nope. Unfortunately, this is, the battery on my computer is at a funky spot where if I don't plug it in, it shows that it's got battery, and then sometimes, like just now, it disappears, like all of a sudden it's down to zero.
Is it the charger?
I'll find it, now.
Can you afford a new computer, George?
Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus.
I actually, I actually have one that I need to set up, but that's like a two-day-long process.
I hate setting up new computers, it's such a pain in the neck. Hello, do a time machine backup, then just dump on the new one.
For those at home, we thank you for your patience. We're momentarily ready to continue in the room, just waiting for the final setup. I guess while you're doing that, I can say that, I'll say for the record, that we've received a memo from Tara Gurg in our health department dated October 20.
I'm going to waive the reading first.
Oh, you know what, actually? Can I please thank you, Alex? Can I have a motion to waive the reading of both notices and to hear both matters simultaneously?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing now, it'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
I want a bigger clarification?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just to be totally by the book, there were actually three notices, the subdivision, the scenic road act, and the public shade tree act.
Right.
So you said both, so all three.
I said all three.
Mm-hmm.
So we're clarifying, when I said both, there was actually three hearings, one for the definitive subdivision, one for the public shade tree, and one for the scenic road. And George will explain the why momentarily.
But the motion doesn't need to be...
But the motion does need to be amended, and we've taken a vote. We've, we have, for the record, received a memo dated October 22nd from Tara Gurg, our assistant public health director, with the department's common contents, including a drainage bond of $7,000 in total for the two homes. An email from Justin Savigno, our town, in our town engineering department, I think that's correct, saying the department has no comment or objection to the subdivision proposal. We have a letter dated today from attorney Barry Fogel, representing Dr. Sergey Aleve, who's in a butter, to 31 Morant Street, requesting more information, with a concern about the topography and grading and so on, which you might be able to speak to tonight. But at this time, George, if you're ready...
Ready, willing, and able.
Let's hit it.
All right. So as indicated, this is an application with respect to the property at 920 South Street. This is sort of the section of South Street that's not too far from Chestnut Street. And this is the location of the former Stanley Tippet Hospice House. So, I don't, a fair number of people are familiar with that, that operation, and therefore know where the property is. It's on the south side of South Street, it's in the rural residential conservation district. The existing lot has a bit over 177 feet of frontage on South Street, with about 5.86 acres extending all the way down to the Charles River. So it's a good-sized piece of property. And as you, as you'll hear, the proposal is basically to divide it into just two lots. So right now, it's a single lot, and the proposal is just to divide it in two lots. As a side note, it might have been possible to squeeze a third one in, but what you get for lots afterwards, and what you kind of have to do to get there, it's sort of better all around to go with just two lots. And, as a part of it, Mr. Connaughton, who's sitting here with me this evening, is planning on living in one of the lots. So he obviously would like a nice, a nice lot for himself. So, with that said, the property was, as mentioned, previously occupied by the Stanley Tippet Hospice Home. That operated there roughly from 1993 until just about a year or two ago. It operated in an old, three-story house with 22 rooms. That was built just after the turn of centuries, the assessors, I think, indicate 1908, so it was an old structure. That structure has since come down, that's been torn down. But it was actually one of the...
It's down, right?
It's down, yes.
It's down.
Yes, it's down. And it was one of the, one of the aspects of the property that made it a little difficult to kind of work with, because the location of that was sort of smack in the middle. So that's why it came down. It was really, I know Brian had actually had a strong interest in trying to preserve it, but to try and do something with the property that really, and to retrofit a 22-room house that had already been retrofitted essentially for what was, in all practical purposes, a commercial use or an institutional-type use, was fairly expensive and a bit of an undertaking. So needless to say, it was, it came down. All right, so what we are proposing is to do two lots. As a part of the subdivision proposal, the package that has been submitted, there was a byright plan that shows that you can do two lots with a 40-foot wide road with a 60-foot radius circle. Now, the reason we submit that is to show that basically we can do a pretty much conforming byright development that doesn't require any significant waivers. In fact, our byright plan shows sidewalks on both sides, you know, basically a full build-out, 24 feet of pavement. That can, that fits, there's enough room to make all that work. However, and actually, I want to mention one thing, I said a 40-foot wide road, and this comes up from time to time, and this is why I want to call it out. The bylaw calls for a 50-foot wide road, however, in the last, I think, 50 years, there's only been one road that was built to 50 feet. Every other road in the town has been 40 feet or less. So it has essentially become, 40 feet has become sort of a de facto standard. And in fact, all the public roads, all throughout town, all throughout the center of town, throughout most of town, are 40 feet wide, that's kind of the standard. All right, so we can do two lots with really no waivers, other than to the 40-foot road. So we have byright two lots. But it doesn't make any logical sense, and especially in this part of town, which is a rural sort of conservation area, to do 24 feet of pavement with two sidewalks for basically what's going to be two houses. So therefore, instead of doing all that, what we are proposing instead is to do a 20-foot wide layout road with 18 feet of pavement coming up to a circle. Now, our circle is a little bit smaller, but it's still a good-sized circle, because there has to be enough room for the fire trucks to get all the way around. We did explore, after some consultation with the current fire chief, we did explore maybe doing like a hammerhead or other alternative design, but nothing really worked well, and it actually seemed that the circle was probably the best way to get the trucks in and out, and also work with the existing property, the grading and what we have for ledge, because a chunk of the property is, does have visible ledge, so we know we're going to have some issues with that anyways.
What did the fire chief say, comment on the width of the road itself, leading into it as far as access, double, access coming and going of multiple trucks and equipment at the same time? Any comments on that? Commented on the radius, what comment was on the road itself?
So it was my impression and my understanding that he was totally fine with the 18-foot wide pavement with the 20-foot wide layout. But, and I don't believe, Alex, I don't believe he submitted...
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to mention this, is we did not get comments from fire or police. We've reminded them a couple times, I think we need to remind them again before the next hearing. Yeah, I know that George and Lee and Chief Conroy did meet, but we do need something in writing from them because of the turnaround, so we'll just keep pushing until we get it.
Okay. And I'll sort of skip ahead and just say, at the end of my remarks, I'm going to tell you that we're going to need to ask for a continuance on our side anyways, so you'll have plenty of time to get the comments from fire. All right. So, so we're proposing this 20-foot wide road with 18-foot pavement, and basically doing it much like some of the other sort of rural developments. And with this, the road, instead of being a public way, will be a dedicated private way, and bear in mind, it's only going to serve two houses. So, in effect, in practice, it's really going to be essentially like a common driveway for, in terms of visually and in terms of practical use. So this is partly why we also feel that it's sufficient width, because really, it's just, as far as coming and going, it's really just two houses. It's not like it's a full subdivision with, you know, 10 lots, and you've got a lot of in and out, delivery trucks, and all this other kind of stuff. All right, so that, by having the smaller road, having the smaller pavement, it looks better, feels better, in keeping with the area, also better environmental impact, or less of an environmental impact, because you have less impervious surface, you know, so it basically is good all the way around. We're also not proposing any sidewalks, because there are no sidewalks on that side of South Street anyways. In fact, I don't think there's any sidewalks really on most of South Street, if not all of it. So, so we're not proposing any sidewalks in the subdivision either, to the extent that it, people are going to, for example, in the rear house, would walk, they just walk down the roadway, which is just like a driveway.
Question on the dimensions, I didn't quite catch, the, I guess it'd be the diameter of the turnaround, what is that?
Was it 50 feet?
52, I think it is.
52 feet? Okay.
And George, I take it that 18-foot width would stay going around that diameter also? It's not going to widen going around the diameter, it's going to stay 18 feet going around the diameter?
That's correct, yes.
And I, I thought that I, that plans had been delivered, you know, to the board members, but I lost them somehow, so I...
I don't think, I don't see anything either.
I didn't get anything delivered, I didn't get anything...
I thought we had a requirement that...
We did have a requirement.
That plans be physically mailed or delivered to the board members.
As I indicated, we're going to be asking to continue in any event, and we're going to, and part of that is we're going to be revising some of it, so we'll definitely make sure to get hard copied plans out.
I mean, it's very hard to work from 8 and 1/2 by 11 printouts.
Absolutely, sometimes it's even harder from the 11 by 17.
Are some of these revisions going to be reflecting some of the comments that have you already received from one of the neighbors, the neighbor's lawyer?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, but I'll get to that.
And one more dimensional question on the turnaround. I drove out that way and went down many small streets off South Street, and it's typical to have a turnaround that has a grassy circle in the middle. Are you proposing such a grassy circle?
Yes, yes, there is a landscape circle in the middle of the turnaround.
Okay, I couldn't quite see that, thank you.
Yes, that's a, that's a fairly sort of a standard design element.
George, would it make sense to share your screen so we can...
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Good point, good point, Alex.
Yes, you may.
Yeah, good point.
I'm going to, I'm going to start with, I think, the lotting plan. Which will be a little bit easier to, there we go. All right, so this one, I think, is a little easier to see. So we have South Street up here, all right, this is obviously the entrance of the property. The existing driveway entrance is roughly in this area. So we're trying to, we're trying to make use of that, and I'm going to come to that in a few minutes, when I talk about the scenic road piece. But we're trying to basically reuse as much as we can the existing opening and the existing sort of driveway area. The existing driveway goes at a different angle, though, so our road, the existing driveway kind of comes almost straight in, and our road, you can see, kind of comes off at an angle here to give us some room to get a decent lot for our front lot. All right, so it comes in, comes up, and you can see, I mean, it is still, unfortunately, a large circle, because to make the radius work and get the turnaround space, we need to do that. But as you'll see when we get to the next plan, the asphalt is sort of shifted inside the circle a little bit, so that we, again, we're trying to minimize the asphalt, we're trying to minimize the impact, but also provide enough room to make sure everything works. All right, so we've got one lot up in here, all right, lot one, the first building lot. And then the second building lot is here, lot two, and this lot actually extends all the way down to the Charles River, way down here. And part of the reason why it's way down there is because you can see here, there's a large wetland area, right? In addition, you know, we also have a riverfront that we have to, that we have to stay out of, we can't disturb the riverfront area. It's for part of it at all, and part of it only minimally.
Well, I think the wetlands supersedes, there were 200 riverfront distance in this case.
They're both, it's pretty close, actually, where the...
The 100-foot buffer is close to the 200-foot buffer in this case?
I'm sorry, no, actually, you're right, this is, the 200 is here.
Yeah, and the 100...
Yeah, so the wetlands go quite far up.
Way up there.
All right. So, and part of the reason why this has been designed the way it is, is to try and minimize and stay out of and stay away from the wetlands, and, not just the wetlands, but also the wetlands buffer areas. So as, I'm sure the board is all familiar, that when it comes to wetlands areas, there's a 100-foot buffer zone, and within that buffer zone, there are stages, or where you can have some activity, less activity, or more activity. And we're trying to stay out of the buffer as much as we can entirely, if we can. We do have a few little areas where we might have to dip into the buffer with respect to utilities, but generally speaking, for most of the work, we're staying completely out of the buffer. All right, so, and actually, let me, speaking of that, so there's also another wetlands on the adjacent property, over here, and so we do have a little area that's on the outside edge of the buffer, where we have some utility, some utility work over in here. So we will have to be, we will have to deal with conservation in some form, whether that be an actual order of conditions, or whether it would be something known as a determination of applicability, but we will have to be dealing with them to get permission of some form or fashion to do the work in the, in the sort of outer edge of the buffer zone there.
What utilities are in that easement?
So that is, I believe, the drain easement, yes, that's a, sewer and drain are in that area.
And that's an existing easement?
That is, no, that's a proposed easement. So we're going to be, that's part of how we get our sewer connection for this lot one. There is an existing sewer line that's basically down here, so we're going to connect to that. I know, it's kind of odd to have the sewer line down further, but...
Yeah, that's what confuses me.
The sewer line down there, they're connecting to...
Yep, yep, yes, yes, I know, usually it's up the street. In this instance, there happens to be an existing sewer line that runs through the property, and the existing sewer easement that runs through the property, so we're connecting into that. So it's a little bit of a different setup, but it's, makes the most sense, and, but and as a result, we have this, you know, there's going to be a little bit of utility work that, up in here, up in the buffer zone, up in here.
George, you had mentioned some unbuildable lot three, or small, you talking about that little sliver at the front of South Street, is that what's going on there?
Yeah, so I actually, I actually didn't mention that yet, but, but I was going to mention that, it's, it's, let me see if I can blow this up a bit.
I'm sorry, I read it, I should say, you didn't mention it, I read it.
If you can see a little bit better. Right, so you see, we've got a little sliver here, right? This is, this is parcel A, is an unbuildable strip, very much like the development... This is, this is parcel A, is an unbuildable strip, very much like the development, not too far from this, off of Chestlet Street, right by the river, and not unlike what was the, the three ninety Grove Street subdivision, which was withdrawn and didn't end up getting acted upon. Same idea, and the reason for that is, you know, the bylaw has this provision about lot width, and for corner lots, we actually, there's actually an inconsistency, an issue in the bylaw. On the one hand, the bylaw has a provision that says that no lot shall be required to have frontage on more than one street, but then when you get to the lot width provision, it essentially, certainly in the single residence B district, it forces essentially frontage because it says you have to have the lot width of frontage. So, even though the bylaw says you can't be required to have frontage, you have to have the width to have frontage. So, it's a, an inconsistency that at some point really needs to be resolved, but the way we deal with that is by putting in this strip here, so technically this Lot One is no longer a corner lot, it actually has all its frontage on the roadway here.
Do you talk about that sliver that's like ten feet wide, is something like that?
Exactly, exactly. And, and, you know, this is the rural residence conservation, so there is a, there is a no-touch or a requirement for a vegetated buffer along the front anyways, so, you know, sort of carving out that strip doesn't really affect anything. In the subdivision, it's an area that can't be really touched or developed or done anything with anyways.
Who owns that slip, that-
So, so, so that could be owned by both lots, you know, I mean, because it's going to be a private way, we're going to have to have a, for lack of a better term, a, you know, loosely association, because the two lots will have to work together with respect to maintenance of the road and plowing and things like that, so the two lots together in the form of a trust likely would be the way, that's usually how we do it, they could, they'll own that parcel A. All right. All right, so, so the road comes in here, we've got Lot One here and Lot Two here, you can actually see what, where the old house was, and you can see it's right smack in the middle of where the circle is. All right, so let me close this one out and let me go over to the- So, this plan, this is essentially our layout plan here, this will give you a little bit of a better idea.
And does Lot Two extend to the south of the roadway than that area that's to the south of the roadway, is that part of Lot Two?
You're talking about that sliver to the, to the bod right below?
Yes, this, this section here?
Yeah, that's-
Yes, that's all part of Lot Two.
Yeah.
And actually, let me change this out, this is, that was, I think, the byright, so.
George, can we go back to the byright, please?
Oh, he's just calling it up.
Thank you. Okay, George, I assume that the reason that you built the byright with a proposed forty-foot wide roadway is because you couldn't get it done with a fifty-foot wide roadway?
Uh, no, it's because of the fact that basically every street has been done at forty feet.
No, I'm not buying that argument, George. I'm not buying that argument, I'm not going to go to say that we can ignore the wording of our bylaws because they've never been, because a particular bylaw by its wording has never been truly enforced. I, that's a bad precedent that I don't want to go to. I mean, if we have a bylaw that says, as of right, it's fifty feet, we have a bylaw that's, or it's a subdivision regulation that says that you have to show that what you want to do can be done as of right, I, 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 I need to talk to Lee Newman about whether or not that bylaw or that regulation requiring an as-of-right plan can be waived, because to be honest with you, I don't know why it's there. It's been there since long before my time, I don't know why we require it, and, and if it can be waived, I would just as soon waive it, but I'm not going to just say that you don't have to present, if it can't be waived, you can just ignore the fifty-foot requirement because there's only been one road that's been fifty feet. Um, that's, as I said, that's, that's a precedent that I'm not willing to make, and, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of your concept to begin with, I want to be able to vote for it, I'd love to be able to waive the requirement that you present an as-of-right, um, uh, plan if you can't do it with a fifty-foot wide road, but if it can't be waived, you've got to find a way to show it to us with a fifty-foot wide road. I'm not going to buy reducing the fifty to forty because, you know, on an ad hoc basis, we just decide to do that.
So, all right, couple, couple of response comments. First off, I would, I would absolutely encourage you to speak with Lee, because we submitted this based in part on conversations with staff. Because the issue has come up in the past, we did raise the question of should we show fifty or was forty-foot okay, and we got the indication that forty-foot was fine. And I suspect and believe that that was in part because of basically the facts that I just outlined, the fact that there's really only been, I think, one street in the last fifty years or so that has been done as fifty, and that waivers have been issued for so many roads in the town that the, and that the standard for public ways is forty-four.
Right. As I've said, as I've said, George, I've got, I've got no problem with reducing the width of the driveway, and whether it's, whether we can reduce it to twenty feet, which is what you're proposing, in my mind is purely a function of whether the police and, and the fire are okay with that. But I'm just, I'm just getting to the point about you're having to show us an as-of-right plan, um, and I'll talk to Lee about that.
Please do, because now this is-
I'd, I'd love to just waive it, to be honest with you.
Right, and, and I will tell you, so since I started doing this work back in the early nineties, there have been conversations about whether or not it should be byright for forty-foot width for subdivisions under a certain number, so for example, under six lots or ten lots or whatever. And, and unfortunately, it's just never come to pass because it's never gotten enough momentum to get there.
I think the regulation should be, should be amended.
Yes, yes.
But that's, but that's the procedure-
Right.
-that should be followed, is to amend the regulation, and I don't see why that, I don't, I don't think we need a town meeting vote to amend that regulation, but if we do, I'm perfectly happy to go to town meeting with it. But that's a different story. It's just a question of whether we need a, an as-of-right plan.
And so, to be clear, are you therefore looking for us to, to submit an as-of-right showing a fifty-foot width, or do you want to have a conversation with-
If Lee, if Lee says it's absolutely required and can't be waived.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'd ask you, if she says it can be waived, ask us to waive it, and I'll vote to waive it.
All right. All right, so I will move on then. So here you can see, this is the utilities and, and road plan, and you can see the road coming in, the pavement, and you can see it here, coming in a little bit short of the circle, coming around, right? So again, we're trying to minimize our impact, trying to minimize our pavement. You can also see here, we've got two, two sets of infiltration systems proposed, one up here in the front, and this is actually in an area, you know, we're trying to fit this in, there's an area that's basically kind of like a clearing almost, or like a sort of scrub area. This front of the, of the property, there are some good mature trees through here, but then after sort of behind those, there's a, there's an area that's open, and in fact, the existing driveway kind of comes up, comes up like in here. So, we're trying to, trying to squeeze this into an open area where there aren't any trees, so we're trying to minimize our impact again there. The other infiltration system is down here, and this is actually one of the things that's getting changed and one of the reasons why we're asking to continue the hearing. After meeting with one of the neighbors, we had discussions about basically flipping, you can see the strain line here, all right, we're going to flip this, and we're going to take this and put it over this side, whoops, and then bring it down this way and have the, and sort of slide the infiltration system over this way a bit. So, basically flipping it, the same concept, but just flipping it from one side to the other.
I don't have Google Maps up, but are you now just then transferring the property to a different butter?
Well, we've got a little bit more room to work with over here in terms of trees. There happen to be a few large trees in this area that we're trying to, trying to protect, and there's one in particular that's sort of in this area that we have identified on site that we want to try and preserve, that's a significant older tree.
Attorney Focals letter identified potential problems-
Yes.
For, for the neighbor on the west side.
Right over in here.
Yes. If you transfer your drainage system to the other side, are you then transferring those similar challenges or issues or potential problems to a neighbor on the east side?
I don't believe so, we will, we will look, look at that to make sure.
You're going to have your engineer look at that and then confirm that.
But part of, part of the reason why I don't believe so is because part of the issue here is, is some of the grading, not just the line itself, but the grading that goes with it. If we switch it over to this side, we already have to, we already have our sewer line over here and a drain line over here, so it's, we have to do some work on this side in any event. So, this was going to get disturbed to put the sewer line in, if we're already disturbing it, then let's put the drain line in as well over there, and, and not doing, not touch an area that, that wouldn't otherwise necessarily be touched.
Understood.
All right. So, and speaking of that, that's the other thing we need to look at, that neighbor also has asked us to, to provide some more information with respect to what we're doing for grading, and so we're going to add that as well. The grading that was incorporated into subdivision was really just the minimal grading for the road and didn't sort of look forward to some, what sort of changes there would be to the lot itself, so we're going to add some of those in to provide that information and then also to be able to work with that to try and minimize impacts. So, that's why we are asking to continue, so we can make those changes. All right, so, so with that, I think we've sort of covered the subdivision itself, I mean, it's pretty straightforward being that it's only two lots. So, let me now switch over to a different plan and go out to the front, because that is the other two hearings.
May I ask a question about the subdivision?
Yes.
Yep. The, the width of the right of way strikes me as very narrow, I don't have any objection to the eighteen-foot paving for a two-way road serving only two houses, but I'm concerned about snow storage, and all you have beyond the eighteen-foot is two feet, and, you know, people can put up a fence or a wall that prevents snow from being plowed in a certain direction on their lots. I think the right of way should be wider, at least twenty-two feet, maybe twenty-four feet, and I don't know that that would necessarily harm your square footage of your lots or anything, but if you're doing amended plans, I think it would be a good thing to have that a little wider.
Gina, you referring to the pavement be wider or just the, the distance beyond the pavement be wider?
The distance beyond the pavement.
Are you, are you guys intending to live in your lot?
Yes.
Lot Two?
Yes.
So, you might even have a section there where you just allow the plow just to dump the-
Have the turn around, yeah.
Well, it could be an easement of some kind, but perhaps it's just as easy to, right away.
Provided that with the grading, that when that snow melts, it doesn't go into, you know, the neighbor-
Right.
You know, it doesn't impact his lot.
Right.
You know, I don't know what the water table is at that level, you know, but if you get a lot of water just naturally and then you have, and then you have, you know, six feet of snow three times a year that melts-
Right.
-and compounds that water problem, that could be a problem for, for Dr. Aleve.
Okay.
But if the topography works and, uh, Mr. Porter says that it's not going to adversely impact your other neighbor, then that might, might do it, that was my thought.
George, with the, with the plan, the next meeting, would you be having anything showing, let's just say, the vegetation, the trees vegetation? I know that falls a little bit more outside of our purview to some degree, but at the same time, in the bylaws, it talks about when possible, preserving when possible, you know, the trees and the vegetation, certain vegetation buffers and trees when possible, because that would, you know, that would help mitigate a lot of the runoff. So, would any of that be shown as far as what maybe be able to be saved?
So, we let, we, we may show, we may have a sketch that shows some of it, but certainly not throughout the property, because as you can imagine, especially a property that's almost six acres, and locate the, you know, every tree would be, it would probably be a month of just infield work, never mind then putting it together, and, and our project like this, especially where Mr. Cotton's planning on living there, that's well beyond, I mean, he's already probably over budget, but that's, definitely would blow the budget. But we will have some information for that, and we've already developed a little bit, it will have some, we're going to continue the dialogue with the neighbor, you know, that's, I mean, do, try to do that anyways, because you want, always want to do a project that has, we'll try to minimize the impacts in all situations, but especially when, when the person who's developing is planning on living there, you don't want to start off, you know, being a bad neighbor before you even live there, right? So, so we'll try and have some information for that, even if we don't have, you know, a full, full-blown plan or, you know, we'll have enough that we can at least have, have maybe a more informed discussion.
Thank you.
All right. So now, let me, I'm going to share with you the, the front of the property, because this goes to both the scenic road and the street opening. Okay. So, you, it might be a little hard to see there, but you can see here, this is the existing wall, all right, and that's basically where the driveway opening is right now, and you can see here is the existing driveway. And then on the other side of the existing driveway, there's a, the wall ends right about here. All right, so, in order to put the proposed roadway in, we have to make some changes out in the front, as I mentioned previously. Basically, the first change we have to make is we have to get rid of this section of the existing wall. All right, and what we're proposing is we're going to get rid of that and reuse the stones that we can to then put a return on this side, so with the existing stone wall here, put a return on this side to basically match, and we'll probably have to clean up, I think, on this side, because this side's kind of falling, falling apart a bit, so we'll have to clean this up a little bit to basically have the two sides match and look nice coming in. So, under the Scenic Road Act, anytime that you alter or remove a wall that is in the layout of a public road that's designated as a scenic way, we have to get permission from the planning board as a part of a scenic road opening, scenic road permit. So, so basically, we're asking for permission for that, and you can see here, this is the property line here, and you can see that this section of the wall is in the layout, so we do need permission for that. This section of the wall is also in the layout, but then actually, as you go further down, the wall then crosses over and is on the property. If we had put the road on that side and we were doing the part of the wall that's on the property, we wouldn't have to get any permission from the board, but as I indicated earlier, we're trying to keep the wall as much as we can and try and reuse the opening so, so, you know, so we do have, we can keep that side all intact, and we only really need to remove the small section here. And one thing I want to comment on that too, because you say, well, you know, really the, what we're proposing isn't much wider than the driveway that was there before as far as the pavement goes. Unfortunately, the driveway that was there before wasn't, didn't have to go through subdivision review and meet certain requirements for, that are based on safety, for, basically for curves coming in and out of roads, and that's a big part of why, you know, we have to have this curve here for the pavement and then this curve here for the layout, oh, I'm sorry, the other way around, that for the- for the layout, this for the pavement. And that is basically required, you know, in the, in the subdivision rules regulations and it's not something that generally gets waived because it's a safety-related issue. So because we have to make this curve, we can't have the driveway come, you know, we can't have the pavement sort of come straight out. We have to get rid of a section of the wall that you would think you can otherwise keep. So that's the first thing, and that relates to the scenic road request, the scenic road hearing. Now, we also have to remove unfortunately two existing trees.
May I ask a question about the wall with regard to the trees?
Sure.
I see that you're putting in some, a, a stone wall that's gonna go in like that on each side, is that right?
So, so this-
What are those, what are those?
Yeah, so this is existing and basically it's just the wall, I mean, it's, it's pretty much what it looks like although it's not quite as sharp.
That existing, the wall goes like that now?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and so basically what we're doing is we're figuring-
Matching it on the other side.
Exactly. If that, right. So, and I have to say, I mean, this side is really kind of, this piece here, if you look at it out in the field, is, it's kind of, how do I, so it used to be kind of, you know, compact and it's kind of, you can see it's kind of spread out. So it needs to be kind of re, re-put back together, but essentially, you know, cleaned up. All right? But we, we felt it made sense to mirror that from an aesthetic standpoint and because then it would look more natural, look more like it's been there, right?
I see. See, I was gonna suggest with respect to the wall that's being removed, why not make a circle, an entry kind of circle of, of the wall? But I can see how if you're matching something that already exists, maybe it does make sense to do it as you've proposed. Yeah, okay.
Right. And in fact, when we were having conversations with staff, you know, it was, the question was, well, you know, what's on the other side? Why don't you match that? So, well, that's exactly what we're thinking, so.
For the trees, you have, you only need permission, our permission, to remove the two trees on that line. You don't need permission to remove the other two trees that are within the roadway.
Yes. So, so, and here's the thing, very much like with the Scenic Road Act, under this, the shade tree law, basically, it's a little different though because the shade tree law is any trees that are in the layout or on the line of the layout. So interestingly enough, this tree and this tree are partially on our property and partially in the layout. One of them is sort of 60 or 70% on our lot and 20 or 30, or 30 or 40% in the layout and the other one is kind of flipped around where it's more in the layout. But they're all basically on the line. So in order to get rid of these two trees, we do need permission. And we did meet with the tree warden on site to have a view and look at, look at the two trees, but we do need to take those out. These trees that need to come out are, are on the property and, you know, although we, you know, we try to minimize removal of trees generally, obviously in this case, these two definitely have to come out because they're right in where the, you know, where the road is gonna go.
Are you proposing to remove other trees where the two homes would be constructed?
There are a number of trees that will have to come out on site in order to get the road in, in order to make the grading work, you know, in order to basically complete the subdivision.
Ed, did you have any comments that you wanted to make about those two trees on the line?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I did meet with Mr. Junta and Mr. Connington at the site and if granted permission for this sub-development, I have no objection to the removal of the two white pines as mentioned and as listed before the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any other comments or questions? So I think at this time, we'll take a motion to continue. When will you have your materials available? When should we continue?
So, we expect to have materials ready to have into you probably January 9th or 10th because of the holidays and vacations that are scheduled?
Actually, I apologize. Before I take a motion and, and we, and we, and we stop at this time, I see there are other people from the public. I, I saw you first. Do you, do you wanna, once, if I may, I'm gonna ask if you wouldn't mind taking a, a seat in the back so this gentleman can come up and can, you can talk into the microphone and then we'll ask you to say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sergey Aleve and I'm the owner of the house at 31 Moran Drive in Needham. Semi-director abutter to 1920 South Street. So at the start, I would like to say that I do not oppose the subdivision. I actually hope that it will be better for the area because actually I hope that it will be more organized and look much neater than it was before because before the forest, the woods were not maintained. Actually, I have been maintaining them as much as I could myself because there were some incidents when big trees had fallen there, they didn't have money to remove them, so I had to do it for them. But it's another story. Again, we're not opposing the subdivision either, I nor my wife. And since the beginning when Brian did buy this property, we did meet, we have been having good communications, good conversation just recently as well, and I hope that we'll continue doing that. And just wanted to mention that the reason we raised that question about that drainage, not because just without no basis, my desire, I have been living there for 27 years and we know this landscape very well. Even right now after this heavy rain and as you mentioned, after big snowstorms, this area is practically flooded all the time so because it's the lowest point of the landscape. If you go further east, it's actually elevates a little bit. And when I bought the house in 95, we did have two, three times flooded the lower level of the house. Right now, this problem kind of mitigated this. We do have some, some pumps there, so it's okay, but this area is very low. Practically that was the reason when we met and we asked the applicant together with his engineer to look into this and to see how can we come to some sort of a compromise. Also, we wanted to discuss the buffer zone and we're continuing these discussions. So basically, we'd like to see some grading, how it will be done, and practically that's it. I have no problems with kind of this type of subdivision going forward. And again, we hope that it will be, area will be, will look much nicer.
And you're satisfied then that they're taking the diligent effort to do those things to create more, to get you more information?
Absolutely.
To satisfy yourself? Okay. Do you have any other comments or questions?
No, not at this point.
Thank you very much. I see there's another couple here. Would you like to come and speak? If you would like to, please?
You want to go over there?
Yes, I would. Thank you. And if we could have your name and address for the record, please?
James Jakobek, J-A-K-O-B-E-K, resident at 50 Bird Drive. Came just to get an idea of what is involved. It sounds like most of this is away from the Bird Drive side of the property. Okay. The other comment I wanted to make, and I'm sure everybody's attuned to it, is question of runoff. And I don't know what goes on on the other side of Mr. Connington's driveway, but I'm sure as, when everybody goes down South Street, they will see ponding on the other side of the road. And I think somebody in fact has a hockey, sets up a little hockey operation. Again, I'm just, hopefully you feel trying to do the right thing and saying, yes, there are sometimes runoff problems there and I think I've had it in the back of my yard when it's really had rained heavily. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So you can tell that we're mindful of, you know, the impacts that the impervious surface can have and on how, you know, the infiltration system will work in addition to snow removal so as not to adversely impact, you know, those, you know, those properties on either side. So with that, we appreciate your participation tonight. I think that was meaningful and helpful. Thank you for your comments. Let's discuss timeframe. When would you like us to continue this until?
All right. So I'm going to sort of make an educated guess based on the comments on the last hearing. And if we get our materials into you, say by the 9th, then, and two weeks after that's gonna put us after your January 17th. So that means we would also be looking at that February, is it February 7th?
February 7th would be, yeah.
I think that's probably realistically the date, the, the date we can-
Okay.
You weren't, you sure you weren't the same night as the other one? Sure about that, George?
Artie, I'll tell you, you know, you never, you never know, you know, how, what, what else is gonna be on the night and, you know, some, some nights, you're happy to have, you know, things before you or after you.
So with that other meeting being at 7:15, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we, that we entertain a motion to continue this hearing to February 7th at 8:15.
Probably makes sense.
No moves.
I have a motion by Paul, a second by-
A second.
The three hearings.
Correct. We'll continue the three hearings, one for the subdivision, one for the scenic road and one for the public shade tree. So we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We are continuing to February 7th at 8:15. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Can we recess for, for five minutes? We'll reconvene at 10 o'clock.
Should I grab? First of all, yes.
All right, let's kick this off. If we're able to bring over Edison and Diana?
Edison is over and I don't see Diana, so maybe Edison, if you can hear us, maybe you were planning on, on speaking without Diana or if she's here under a different name, just let me know.
I'm gonna text Paul.
Roy, not Roy, Edison, if you can hear us, you're on mute and we can't see you.
So right now, we're dealing with the transfer of permit.
Correct. I meant to mention in our last session that we had an email as well from Debbie Anderson about the Conservation Commission from December 15th. Can you reinclude that, please, in our packet for that, for the next, so I can call that out? I wasn't clear whether they need to go to CONCON. I meant to ask that to, to George. Did, did you serve on CONCON before?
Yeah, 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 Paul, both Paul and I did.
Right, okay. We now, looks like we have Edison and we have Paul. So let's start Edison with, with you. You, I understand that this is a transfer of the major project site plan special permit number 1991-01 from TDRG Inc., transferring the permit to Creed Corp., which would be Edison, I understand that's your businesses. And you're continuing the business name Cook Restaurant for the property located at 101-105 Chapel Street? Would you like to explain what's happening and what the changes are that you intend?
You're muted, Edison. You're, you're still muted. That's better.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Edison. Yes, we're looking for a trumper between those corporations. We are going to continue with the same name. We are keeping the self, the same floor plan, not changes to the floor plan. Basically, what we're doing is just change daily specials and work on the food menu, bar menu, stuff like that, nothing, no changes on the floor plan.
Their Cobb salad is what I typically get on a fairly frequent basis.
That one stays on. That's one of my favorites and that one stays on. We're not gonna fix anything that has not brought. That one is, is a delicious salad.
Well, if we're talking about menus, Mr. Chair, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're making some changes. I will say that. I'm glad you're making changes. I'm sure you had some very delicious things, but I'm glad you're making some changes and you see that. Let's, I'll just leave it at that. So thank you for that part.
You're welcome.
Jean, do you have any comments or questions about the transfer?
No, I really don't. It's a different corporation, but the same principles, the principle's the same in a new corporation.
No, they're changing.
New owners.
Paul Torino ran the previous Cook business and Edison will run the new business.
Oh, I see.
One is, one is, there, these guys will run Creed Corp. doing businesses Cook Restaurant.
Yes.
And with, Creed Corp., that's right, with a C. And the former owner was TDRG Inc.
Okay.
So it's a different entity with different ownership.
Okay. Now I understand, thank you.
Sure. Artie, do you have any comments or questions?
The only question I have is not that it's gonna change our decision at all. So you're, you're keeping the layout, but are you changing the decor at all? It doesn't affect our decision. I just wanted to know as a Needham resident, are you changing the decor at all?
We already improved and we changed some, we do some Christmas decor. It looks pretty, pretty walkin' and pretty warm inside. But nothing, nothing major. It's just the way it looks, the decor. We, we will change it a little bit, yes.
Paul, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, just that you've got the letter signed by Mr. Gutierrez that states that he's read the special permit and only requesting one, one change to it, but I, I just want to have it on the record, Mr. Gutierrez, that, that you have read the special permit and you agree to abide by all of its terms. You know, there are a lot of conditions in, in the special permit and we just need to have it on the record that you agree to abide by, by all of the terms of the special permit and that you understand them.
Yes, yes, we, we agree with them. We already read it and yes, we, we agree with them, yeah.
Right. And you, for the record, Mr. Gutierrez has requested that we extend his hours and we do have a draft decision that anticipates that we will agree.
To be, to be clear, the extended hour is that you intend on Saturday to open at 10 instead of 11, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, to open at 10 a.m. Saturdays and Sundays for, for a new menu, for brunch menu, for a, a new menu.
So Paul, you approve that, that change, that modification?
Yes, I do.
Artie, do you approve that modification? Jean, do you approve that?
Yes, I do.
The chair does as well. So I, shall I have a motion to approve the transfer and to approve the, the one change in the site plan, the special permit rather?
Let me, let me first make a motion to, to treat the change in the site plan special permit as a minor modification.
Yep, good idea.
So moved and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Okay, and now I move that we approve the transfer with the minor modification requested.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Jean, Jean got the second.
Seconded by Jean. Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul.
Aye.
Artie.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. And then a motion to accept the relief?
Yes.
I think we just voted that.
In addition to the draft decision, I think is where we-
The final motion is to approve the decision as written.
So moved.
So moved.
A motion by Jean, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul.
Aye.
Artie.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations, Mr. Gutierrez. Best of luck in, in the business.
Thank you very much. Thank you all and you're all working very hard, so I hope to see you soon over there. You deserve a good meal.
I'll look for, when did you take over? When was- Oh, look, when did you take over? When was the transfer effective?
The trumper was effective on November 31st.
All right, well, your management continues to make a good Cobb salad. Cause I've had it since then.
That's my favorite salad, I, I will never touch it.
Good fun, thank you very much.
I'll be in touch about next steps.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
So, next up is Coca-Cola.
Signature pages being passed around.
Do you have a pen?
No.
We need a stickboard.
I know, nobody wants to share their pen.
Alex, do you need my signature?
Yes, I do, I do.
Do you want me to drive it over to you tomorrow, Paul?
No, I'm not gonna be around. I'll get over to the, the planning department one morning this week.
Yeah, well, probably go to the town clerk's office on Thursday, so if you could do it tomorrow, Wednesday, or Thursday morning, that would be awesome, and I'll have a signature sheet for Highland Science Center, too. Hoping that I'll have something to file with the town clerk by the end of the week, I figure I'm gonna start getting signatures at least.
All right, so if you smart and funny gentlemen wanna step up to the microphone, the hot seat, we'd like to welcome you, and then Evans, you're up, do you want to tell us what's happening and what, and a date for next steps?
Sure, so, thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak to this briefly. I didn't want this issue to be just sitting out there, or maybe perhaps creating more concern than in our view it should. So, Lee pointed out to me that there is an inconsistency and in fact an error in the documents that we submitted, and the inconsistency or error is that on the parking analysis, in the documents we submitted, for the large portion of the building, it says that building is classified as warehouse, but the, the stated parking requirement is one space per 400 square feet. That is in fact the parking requirement for the next category in the, in the bylaw, light industrial or manufacturing. The parking requirement for warehouse is one space per 850 square feet, and so Lee correctly pointed out that there's a, there's an apparent issue here, and if, she says, if the correct classification is warehouse, then we actually need considerably less parking than we had calculated in our parking table. So, I spoke to Mr. Nowak, who's there with you tonight, about this, and, you know, the question that we initially discussed was, what's the basis for this inconsistency? Is it because we use the wrong classification, or because we use the wrong parking requirement formula? And the answer is, first of all, that we think that that's the incorrect classification, and again, I acknowledge this is an error on our part, that it's not correctly classified as a warehouse, but rather more accurately classified as light manufacturing. I'm sorry, light industrial. And, you know, unfortunately, the bylaw does not define either of those terms. It doesn't define warehouse, and it doesn't define light and industrial, but the ITE Parking Generation Manual does. And, so, if you look at those definitions, I think it's, given what goes on at this facility, which is a lot more than just storage, like in a warehouse, that it's not accurate to classify this building as a warehouse. My understanding, which Mr. Nowak can speak to, he spoke with Dave Roach about this. Dave agrees that there's some ambiguity here about whether or not this is, whether or not this is warehouse or light industrial. So there's some ambiguity there about which of those parking formulas applies. There's another issue that this raises, having to do with the way we counted the existing parking supply. The, you know, which we didn't really think about when it was very clear that there was way fewer parking spaces than the bylaw required. But the issue is that in our parking count, in our total parking count, we included the so-called truck spaces. And if you look at the, the bylaw does define parking space, and a parking space is defined as, as a space for a automobile. It doesn't say anything about parking trucks. And I think, if you think about it sort of intuitively, that kind of makes sense when, when you're defining the parking requirements for, you know, a warehouse or any other facility that people are coming and going to. It's intended to make sure that there's enough cars, enough parking spaces for the cars that are bringing the people there and, and bringing them to and from the site. And so, if you look at our site from that perspective, there's, there's two groups of, of, there's vehicle, you know, automobile parking, and then there is these spaces which are used for, which we called truck parking, but are really used for storage, most of them are used for storage of trailers, some of them are used for, you know, trailers that are attached to cabs and are moving. But even if you were to classify this large building as warehouse, which again, we don't think is correct, even if you were to do so, if you look at the actual automobile parking supply on the site, you get a different outcome, and we are still short, although not short by as much as we had previously thought. We were, we are still short in terms of the parking supply. So, we believe we're still gonna need a special, a waiver, along with the site plan review, we're gonna need a waiver of the, you know, strict compliance of the requirements of the parking, but, and we know that we need to submit revised documents, and therefore we can't resolve this tonight. But I did just wanna sort of point out to the board that, you know, this was, this is triggered by an error on our part. We believe it's, you know, readily fixable, we can, we can submit revised documentation on this for the next hearing.
Let's come to that. When, when would you be ready to, to complete the English problem and the math problem?
We can certainly be ready in advance of the January 17th hearing.
So, and then we'll need probably, Alex, we'll need town engineering to probably look it over, and maybe fire and police. Health has already looked at it, there's no substantive greater impact.
I would say, yeah, at least engineering, I don't, I don't know if fire and police.
Okay.
We're not, we're not gonna be proposing change, Adam, just to be clear, we are not proposing to change any of the parking that we presented to the board. The only thing that we are changing is the calculation as to the parking required by the bylaw.
Thank you.
We would probably just have engineering look at it, and I think that we would just need enough time to get that revised calculations, to revise our decision, to be able to work with you on it and get it in the packet, so. I don't think any of this is, I mean, what, I don't know who's gonna be writing us something, but when do you think you can get us that information?
We basically want it to, like, by January 3rd.
Easily.
Easily?
Easily, all right, done, the 17th.
So, can I have a motion to continue the hearing to, Jean, did you have a question before?
Yes, I do, I just wanna understand something. Mr. Evans said it should have been warehouse, there was an inconsistency, should have been warehouse use, not light manufacturing, so need less parking than indicated.
It was the other way around.
But then, the other way around?
Yes.
Jean, the documents that we submitted classified the large portion of the building as warehouse.
Oh.
And we don't think that that is the correct classification.
Well, that's what I, that's why I, I understand.
Even if reasonable minds could disagree about whether or not it's properly classified as warehouse, if you look at the automobile parking supply on site, we still need a special permit. Not by as much, we're not short by as much, but we're still a little bit short.
So, it was classified as warehouse, but should have been light manufacturing?
In our view, yes.
All right.
Light industrial, I think is the correct term.
As I understand the operation, trucks bring in boxes of, of product, and then maybe the boxes of product get, or, you know, or great big crates of product, get resorted into what the customer wants, and then the trucks take it away again. I don't see the manufacturing, I see it, I don't understand why that isn't a warehouse.
So, Jean, Jean, what I was saying was, we have to be careful about the terminology. The, the category in the bylaw is, quote, "industrial or manufacturing." Okay, we are not saying this is manufacturing, it used to be manufacturing, but it's not anymore. But we do think it is most, most accurately classified as industrial as opposed to warehouse. If you look at the definition of warehouse, there is no definition in the bylaw. If you look at the definition of warehouse in the ITE Parking Manual, Parking Generation Manual, and you compare that to the definition of, of light industrial, we think that this more accurately fits into the latter, light industrial. There are activities that are going on there, which Mark Noguera, who's, who's in front of you, can speak to, that are more than just storage of product, and, you know, putting it on, on shelves and taking it down again, and so, you know, and if you'd like Mr. Noguera to speak to that now, he certainly can.
Just wanna know whether in your discussions with our building commissioner and planning director, they have come to agree with that? Is that what you said, or?
No, that's not what I said.
Oh.
All I said was that I think Mr. Roach, I don't think Mr. Roach completely agrees with our view as to which category it should be classified as, but he did acknowledge that there's ambiguity there.
I see, all right, thank you.
So I think Alex would probably want, and Evans will probably want some level of continuity or agreement that, that our building commissioner concurs with whatever classification you've ultimately resolved.
Okay, I guess my only concern is whether or not we can get that concurrence between now and January 3, given the intervening holidays. Maybe we can, I don't know.
Yeah, I, we rely on our building commissioner and on our planning staff. To...
So, what we can do is earmark this, take a motion for Jan, for January, what do we say?
17th.
On January 17th.
January 17th, yeah.
And you'll, you know, you'll hear, hopefully, Dave Roach is in tomorrow or in the next couple of days, and he'll let you know what his availability is like, and then you can let Alex and Lee know if you need to bump to the following meeting.
Okay, that sounds fair, thank you. I mean, that's, that's flexible, I appreciate that flexibility. We obviously wanna get this resolved as quickly as we can.
I don't think the board now has any unresolved issues, this is just an unforeseen error that has gotta be cleaned up.
And, and I apologize, this is an error that we caused, and so we need to clean it up. And really, the only question is, which is the correct classification, and then that, the answer to that question will drive the parking.
Motion to continue this hearing to January 3rd at...
Well, this isn't January 17th, I thought you said.
I apologize, hang for the correction, for January 17th at 8:00.
It's not a hearing, you don't need to sign.
8:15, it's not a hearing. That's wonderful, thanks, Alex, I forgot, not a hearing, we'll see you folks. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
I, I'm reminded of, you know, Coca-Cola's advertising over the holidays, I wish I could give the world a Coke. Well, happy holidays, thank you very much. Evans, thank you very much. This brings us to our next item.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I have a question that I will ask you to, to check with Lee as to whether procedurally we need to reopen the hearing in order to deal with this issue.
Thank you. That is a very good point, it's, what are we changing? We're changing the traffic, impact analysis.
Just the park, the parking table. So...
Just the parking table.
So, text on the parking table. So, if the agreement is it's light industrial, the numbers all stay the same, we just change the word warehouse to light industrial. If the feeling is it's warehouse, then the word warehouse stays and the numbers change to less required, but again, we still are below...
Although, the waiver is gonna change.
This is my question, is, in any which way, is your requested waiver going to go up?
No.
No.
It's either the same, or it'll be, will be less out of compliance.
I'm gonna go out on a limb, I'm gonna say I think we're okay, we can confirm with Lee, but I, I think, as long as you're not increasing your waiver, I don't think we need to bring it back to a public hearing process.
But, but I have a concern. Doesn't the decision, or the proposed decision, approve a certain use as a major project? That's an important distinction, we're approving one use or the other use, we're approving warehouse or industrial?
I would say that the way our bylaw is organized is such that the use table does not line up with the parking requirements section.
So they...
Sometimes, sometimes it does, when you're lucky, but the, the use table is much more specific, and the parking requirements table has a list of like 12, so they...
So the fact that this is a major project site plan special permit is, is it only because of the certain number of parking spaces that, that it's a major project site plan?
We're not, we're not, I, we're not changing the, the use.
I thought we were.
Because, Evans, isn't that correct? Because that had already, that had already occurred.
Yeah, we are not, we are not changing, the only thing that is gonna be changing here potentially, Jean, is either correcting a, a wrong word on our submission, or if the word is correct, changing the calculation as to the parking required by the bylaw somewhat, either way.
Base amendment, but the base amendment itself, setting aside the issue of parking, the amendment, is that as a result of a change in use, or than the previous manufacturing and bottling and...
No, no, the amendment, the amendment to the special permit is because, because we are creating new spaces, and we are, and, and we're doing some construct, you know, some, I think more than 10,000 square feet of construction.
That's the main one.
Yes.
And, 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 and therefore, you know, the, the existing special permit, you know, basically said, no further changes without an amendment. And so we are changing the parking on site, we're making it better actually, and various other improvements as well, you know, more green space, better landscaping, et cetera. But, but it's also, you know, major project site plan review, so we, this issue about, did, you know, did we correctly or incorrectly identify the use per the bylaw parking table? The parking table, did we, did we select the correct category table? If we did, then this is a very minor issue of changing a word. If we pick the wrong category, then we have to recalculate the parking required. We are not proposing to change the parking that we will be providing, we're just changing... We're just changing how that compares to the parking required by the bylaw.
So I understand the use was industrial, will continue as industrial.
The use that they were using before is going to continue. Use that is described in the special permit is going to continue. The question is, for parking purposes, how do you label that use?
So with that, we'll continue this without a time for January 17. And in the event we need more time or you need more time, you let us know. But we don't want this to languish. We would like to take action and move forward.
Right. Well, we don't want it to languish either. So, but thank you for that exit ramp if we needed.
Understood. So gentlemen, thank you all very much. Have a good evening. Have a good holiday season. And now we'll come to the decision for 557 Highland Avenue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you, folks. And I will say that on this, we have Lee's red line. We also, I think have the comments from the developer's attorney to that red line in response. Natasha's not here tonight, so obviously we'll have to, which is why we're going to have another deliberation session. That meeting is set for Thursday at 2 or 3?
Two.
At 2 o'clock?
Two until 3.
Two until 3, so at which time we'll take a vote on the relief, and then we'll have a vote on the final decision. But I think the final decision is predominantly there. I have a couple mechanical questions, Alex, and I don't know if you're able to answer these or not.
Let's try.
Let's try. It's a fun game, right? So first up is, at the very bottom, it says, I guess that means NTD, Note to Decision?
I don't know.
Okay.
That means, I saw that too, and I didn't know.
Is that going to stay, or should I stay, or should I go now? I saw that there was, I mean, I recall from our last meeting, we talked about a solar-ready status, and Artie, have you had a chance to review the final version?
Yes, as you said, yeah, what happened was the, in fact, again, I mean, I appreciated Jean's comment about the parking garage and the solar, but something was bothering me about that, so I went back to the plans, and the applicant had specifically shown solar arrays on the two main buildings, and it talked about putting solar arrays in the two main buildings.
Well, actually, that site plan that you're referring to, which is here-
Yeah, there are multiple-
In fact, this is what you're talking about. It's not a solar array. It's just a mechanical roof. And I-
Well, they specifically talked about putting-
Right here. This is the image. MEP, MEP PH is not a photovoltaic roof.
Well, I know PH is not a-
It's a mechanical penthouse.
Well, but they were talking about, specifically talking about solar arrays, solar on these two roofs. That's what they were talking about, being able to put solar on these two roofs. That's what they were talking about, on these two roof surfaces.
So-
They said they were going to do it. They said they were going to put solar on the two main roof surfaces.
I actually think, Jean, when we looked at the minutes, it did not specifically say that, but notwithstanding-
Well, it does. On the recording, it very specifically said they are going to put solar on the two buildings.
We'll set that aside for a moment, because regardless, they've agreed to do it at the point.
Yeah.
And they've added some additional comment to that, which I should have here. I do have here. I just need a minute to find it. So, Artie, what we're saying is, what the, I should say, what the developer has proposed, their proposed red line to our red line-
When was that red line showing up, sent up? Because I didn't see that red line.
Mr. Chair, I looked over at the email that came from Lee Newman that said attached is the red line. I opened the document expecting to find a red line that I could review, and I did not find a red line.
I saw, I-
Felt handicapped in reviewing.
Jean, 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 I had to go in to the settings and change the settings under review so that the red lines showed up.
Gosh, okay.
And I was able to do it.
Solution, but I regret that I-
So let me just read it then for everyone. So the revision that the developers had with dealing with, for solar panels on the roof, Artie, which they're agreeing to do, says-
What section is that?
I'm at 3.12.
3.12, okay. And it's now on the final version?
Well, this is what, this is what the applicant, the latest that the applicant-
The applicant's-
I didn't see, I didn't see that on the draft.
Oh, the applicant's red line.
I saw something that Lee sent separate.
We got a separate red line from Tim Sullivan, which was in our materials. Not sent by Lee in a separate email.
Yeah, is that what we're speaking of now?
And so there-
3.12, okay. 3.12, got it.
I think I'm looking at- So Lee has said simply that the petitioner shall install solar arrays on the roof of the north and south buildings as such elements were presented to the board by the petitioner at the public hearings on January 7 and October 3. Now, the petitioner has said and has struck that language and replaced it with, "As a condition to issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the project, the petitioner shall install one or more solar arrays as part of the north and/or south buildings, provided that, one, the petitioner determines based on an analysis from a qualified professional that the installation of such solar arrays and all supporting equipment on the roof of such buildings is feasible after taking into consideration the desired equipment and other appurtenances to be located on such roof. Two, the solar arrays and all supporting equipment can be installed in compliance with all applicable state and local rules, regulations, and requirements without the granting of variances or other relief. And three, that the installation of such solar arrays and all supporting equipment would not require the petitioner to modify any aspects of the project as approved by this decision, including without limitation, the building height, building design, configuration of the desired mechanical systems, roof space available for mechanical systems, screening, et cetera." So with that concept, you know, are we okay with those reasonable exceptions?
Well, I mean, I understand essentially what they're saying, what they're trying to say, and at the same time, what they are also saying is that, you know, I'll paraphrase this, of course, but, you know, we settled at the meetings that we're going to put solar on the buildings, not a building. But at the same time, we're, you know, there's a bunch of road, there's a bunch of situations here where at a choice of ours, we may decide that it's creating a hindrance to what's going on with some of the mechanicals in the building. I don't see that, I don't see that as such, when you're looking at those plans, how that could possibly create a hindrance. So I think this is unnecessary, this is unnecessarily convoluted, is one way of putting it, of making it very easy for the solar not to appear in the building. Now, that being said, what's interesting is that what might be coming up in the next year is very well, might be, what might be coming up is an allowance for solar on buildings that simply goes, that can go over some mechanicals if they choose to do so, to make it easier for developers to put solar on buildings.
Right.
Even more solar than what's being shown here. So that, again, that may very well be coming up in a bylaw this year, which will be before this building is certainly even built. I think that's fair to say. It's before the building is even built. So I don't see a need, I don't see a need to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to phrase it this way, to give an easy out. This language gives-
So just so I'm clear, just to be very, just in the interest of time.
Yep.
You're not happy with that revised language?
Yeah, I'm not happy with the revised language because I think it gives an easy out.
Okay, I understand that.
And not to do what they said they were going to do at the meetings.
I get it. I totally get it.
No, I know you're shutting off, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of instances where they can just, it just gets shut off, where it's essentially, even though it says, you know, according to the bylaws, will it allow, not allow, of course, it's always going to be, will it be allowed? That's a given. It's, no matter what they're building in this building, it has to be, it has to conform to the standards going through the building department.
I understand.
That goes without saying. Every aspect of the building has to go before that. It isn't just this one thing. But again, they said they were going to do it, so it seems clear that it doesn't need to be anything complicated linear, that they're saying they're going to put it on the building, on both buildings. It should be, it should be in the decision that they're going to put them on both buildings.
Would it be helpful for them to explain why they've drafted it that way?
It could be, it would be helpful to see if there's a way to uncomplicate it to make it, to make it more probable that it'll actually occur, because this gives a high probability it will not occur.
So before we come to that-
Chair, in the interest of time, may I say something?
Yeah.
I agree with Artie. Not only do I agree with Artie, I think we should leave it the way Lee drafted it. And if they come, if they find that they have a problem, then let them come back to us with a, with an amendment or a minor modification. They agreed to put solar arrays on, fine. That's our condition. That's what they agreed to. We've closed the hearing. I've got a number of issues with their language where we've closed the hearing, and now they're changing things that I feel require public hearing discussion. And so I feel that we should go forward with the decision as drafted by Lee, and if they want to come back to us with a minor modification or with an amendment to the decision for these other issues, they're free to do so.
Thank you. Jean, do you have any comments or you concur with our colleagues?
I concur with my colleagues on that particular point on the solar.
Okay.
And again, Mr. Chair, just to repeat, there's a very, very high probability that this year, something will change in our bylaws to make it easier for you to put solar on the building. If, you know, if you choose to, even if you choose to put more, it'll be easier. So that's, but that's coming up.
Sure. I'm just, for the record, Attorney Tim Sullivan for the developer to speak.
Thank you.
For clarification.
Yeah, so there was a, our client submitted a letter this afternoon that outlined, there are three points here in the decision.
By law, oh, speaking of that, Mr. Sullivan, did you hear what I said earlier in the evening about receiving letters at 5:30 of the night of a hearing?
I did not.
I greatly resent receiving a letter at 5:30 of the night of a hearing and expecting me to digest it and consider it and be ready for the hearing.
Well-
And please relay that to your client. If he's going to send a letter like that, tell him to get it to us in plenty of time for us to consider it.
Paul, apologies for the submission timeline. What I will say, though, Paul, is that the red line that I submitted with comments from Lee was submitted last week, and the substance is all there. So none of that changed. The letter did add some color and frankly, you know, some commentary just as to why they were important. But the changes in the substance of legal drafting didn't change between when we submitted it and that letter. And I, while I appreciate the comments from the board and Paul, your frustration, I do think, I don't think anything has changed per se. Nothing has changed. And I would like the opportunity to exchange why I suggested these edits, and they really are on three distinct areas, and the solar is the first one that came up. You know, when you look at the requirements in the bylaw, you know, and the technology, Artie, you're absolutely right. Things change every day. You know, we've got a lot of-
Well, I never said things change every day. Technology is, technology is here. It has a minor, it has a minor variance through time, but there's no incredible, there's no incredible breakthrough which will change what we do today versus what happens two years from now.
Well, I mean, it could be that there's glass that's better than solar panels.
And it could be, and if that comes up, then you come back and say, hey, guess what? We can do better.
It can't be, I don't know exactly the commitment that you're referring to. There were certainly, in presentations, we might have said there were opportunities. There was no plan that showed the solar, okay? There were mechanical penthouses noted. In light of all that, we have committed that the buildings will be solar-ready and that we will implement solar arrays. That is in this decision. What we had suggested was language that gives us some flexibility, because there are currently limitations on what you can do for height, what limitations you can do for coverage of roof area. And so if a consultant looks at this and says, the panels have to be angled this way, and that causes a height violation, or it has to cover so much area that we can't have vents for our mechanical systems, frankly, that just doesn't work, and we need the opportunity to have that language in here. It's protective language.
But that's, but that's just-
Artie, we've been through a process that has taken six months.
Yeah, but that's normal.
And we need to have a decision that protects us.
But nothing's going to change that.
You don't know that.
If there's this event coming up, then there's an event coming up on that roof.
If a consultant says that we have to cover 100% of this roof area to get the solar capacity that we need to make sense, and then we can't have mechanicals to vent the building, you're not going to have a building. All this is doing-
Then the applicant shouldn't have stated it was going to occur.
I don't know what you're referring to with all due respect.
I'm referring to the public meetings when it was stated it was going to occur.
When we looked at the minutes, we didn't actually see that commitment.
That's, honestly, it doesn't matter, because in any event, what we're saying is we're going to have solar-ready buildings with solar arrays. We just need the protection to have the flexibility that if a building can't have them because we need to have mechanicals or it doesn't have solar coverage, that we don't have to come back to this board and go through, no, that doesn't work. We can't do that.
Then come back.
It doesn't work, Artie. We can't do it.
Come back.
Well, that's not, that's not a practice language with all due respect.
But it was stated it was going to occur. Then you come back and say, well, we can't, we don't, we can't really do it. We need, we need options to not do what we said we were going to do. I think that's, I think it's fair to hold people accountable, which is what they said they were going to do.
And this decision says that the buildings will be solar-ready and that solar arrays will be implemented, subject to going through certain requirements. Getting a consultant, making sure we comply with code. It says exactly what you're asking us to say with some reasonable protections.
Every aspect of this project falls under the exact same conditions, every part of it. Even the solar array is going to, everything's going to fall through, flow through the building department, the exact same thing.
The only point I want the board to understand is that solar-ready is being committed to, solar arrays are being committed to, and the language is intended to deal with the design as it evolves, as you rightfully pointed out, technology evolves. That's why the language is there. It's the same as what was presented. It is a commitment by the developer to be solar-ready and to have solar arrays with protection that is reasonably necessary for lenders, for equity investors, and for ourselves, and that's the intent.
So it sounds to me like you're, you know, you're not looking, Artie said that there's a high, with this language, there's a high probability or a high likelihood that you're not going to do it. But that's not what I think I'm hearing from you. You're saying that you-
That is not what you're hearing from me.
Fully intend to do it, but you have to do it in a way that complies with the bylaw, because Artie, we don't-
Yeah, but that's already a given, but every aspect of this project, no, every aspect of this project has to comply with the bylaws. If it doesn't-
If this language isn't there, and the building has to be covered 100% on the roof to make solar work, then you can't have mechanicals.
Well, we're not saying it's out of solar. We're not saying that.
So we're trying to say the same thing.
No, no, we're not.
So Artie, what do you want him to do if he's in this situation? What's the, what's the height, what's the height for the north, for the north building? Your relief, it's five stories and 75 feet or four, I can't, uh-
I think the percentage of the roof is probably a better example, frankly, because you can only cover the roof with a certain percentage of stuff.
25, 25% of the roof?
That's just the way the bylaw works.
Okay.
And so if that limitation is, if there's a conflict between solar and mechanicals for the roof, we need to have mechanicals to make the building work, or there is no building. and mechanicals for the roof, we need to have mechanicals to make the building work or there is no building.
So how do you want him to, you're okay with that solution?
What solution?
Well, he just explained a scenario where you've got, you've got a roof that's like this.
Yeah.
And the bylaw says you can't have, let's say, more than this area to be covered by mechanicals. So they've got a choice, not build the building, or, or, uh, or not to put the solar on.
Yes, but.
If that's a scenario, in that scenario.
Well, yeah, but we're not, we're talking about, we're talking about the building, the visuals that were presented right now, those, that's what was presented on, on the roof.
Where, that's not correct. Where does it show me here where it says solar panels, Artie?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, one second.
Talking about, you know, those two, those two surfaces, no, on those two surfaces, those two.
The, the image that you sent, Artie, shows, it shows.
The image that I sent?
Yeah, you sent an image to Lee. She.
I didn't show.
You sent this image to Lee and said on this image, I'm just pulling it here. One second, Gene, one second.
I'm saying, yeah, putting solar panels on, on these two surfaces is that, they're not going over these at this point. They're going on that. Those are the surfaces they're going on.
So, so.
They're not going over these right now.
So Lee had said, Lee had said that, that in your mind, this picture had shown that's where the solar panels are going.
Yeah, yeah.
But just to reiterate.
No, I.
That's not the case.
Our intention is to do this. I mean, that is the.
Solar panels are not going here, so the only place they can go is on these two surfaces there.
So if they come back.
Those are the only surfaces that can go on.
There's also a maximum height. There's also a maximum height. So if they exceed the maximum height by putting solar panels on here, what do you want them to do?
If they exceed the, I mean, if they exceed the maximum height, I guess we'll have to come back and see why they're exceeding the maximum.
Because, because of the solar array.
Well, the problem is, the problem is, if someone states they're going to do something, then they find, then they've committed, then they find a way to make that,
Let's just solve that problem.
Make that occur in the space that's allowed. The only space allowed at this moment in time is that space there.
Again, we, we've committed to lead standards, we've committed to, you know, exploring all these things, and we've committed to have solar ready buildings with solar arrays, subject to the language I've put in here, so that we can have someone look at where exactly those are. These are conceptual permit drawings in that respect. So there has not been a solar consultant to say exactly where those would go and how they would be angled and how they would be covered. And that has to be done.
They're angled at five or seven degrees. That's the angle that they're at. They're about, they're about seven.
How high would the building be at that point?
They're about seven inches off the top.
We don't, we don't have that information yet, Artie. We just don't. Okay? We don't know how high it will be and how it will comply, and we can't be in a position where we have to come back and get a variance.
Gene?
Yes, I, to make my file just a little smaller than it otherwise would be, I did throw away some plan sets. And so the only plan set I happen to have is the later one.
So this is.
Of, 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 excuse me, September 29th, 2022. But in talking about this issue with Lee Newman, she had, she had emailed me a copy of the, one of the plans that was submitted.
It's this.
On September 7th, 2022.
Yeah, that's what this is.
Yes. All right, good. Oh, yes. All right, good. That's what we're looking at. I just wanted to see. And it does say, it uses the word potential. That's all I wanted to put down.
On the parking garage, yes, on the parking garage, yes.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yes, on the parking garage, yes.
And then on the other buildings, what does M-E-P-P-H mean on each?
Mechanical penthouse.
Mechanical penthouse.
But the solar, but the only, but during the meetings, those are the two areas that were, that were also, the roof surfaces, those are the two areas that were indicated for solar. See, that's the only place they can be. They were never going to be on top of the mechanicals.
Those are absolutely the, the potential areas you'd put them. There's no question about that.
And the, and the, and the applicant said they were going to do that. That's what they said they were going to do.
Gene and I looked at.
In the recording. Whether it's in the minutes or not, it was in the recording because it was specifically talked about, very specifically talked about.
Again, and the, the decision does too.
Well, the decision that, that Lee put in there talks about.
The decision that I, with the language that I've had, with, that gives us flexibility, if, if you find out a building can't do it because it can't comply, we need this flexibility. So, you know, I think I've made the point to the board.
Unless, unless Artie, would you be satisfied with a, with a condition here that says the applicant shall not be required to fulfill any of their commitments if such would be in compliant, would be on a compliance with the rest of the bylaw?
I would, I would accept something if, so, so.
Go ahead, Paul. Just some language, please.
Sure.
Tim, take a look at your language for 3.12. As a condition to issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the project, the petitioner shall install one or more solar arrays as part of the north and/or south buildings provided that. One, take out the words the petitioner determines based on an analysis from a qualified professional. It starts, one, that the installation of such solar arrays and such supporting equipment on the roof of such buildings is feasible after taking into consideration, take out the word desired. That's a subjective term. After taking into consideration the equipment and other appurtenance to be located on such roof, I, I really object to your client being able to make the decisions here. Two, the solar arrays and all supporting equipment can be installed in compliance with all applicable state and local rules and requirements without the granting of variances or other relief, and I don't know what you mean by variances, to be honest with you. And three, the installation of the solar arrays would not require the petitioner to modify any aspects of the project as approved by this decision. I've, I've got no problem with that language at all.
Changes are fine, Paul.
I, I think that, thank you very much, Paul. That so helped.
Artie?
I, I can accept those, Paul.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul. So at least the four of us are resolved then on the revised language for that. There was, there were two other, I think, those, and I think these are the only outstanding points. And one is the question of the phasing.
Yeah.
Uh, if there is a phasing and.
May I address those just because?
Yeah, but just to, just to, just to make a point, it's never been said to us that you intend to build these, like build building one, and then 10 years later, build building two, and, you know, and have a certain form of landscaping and parking for just the first building for the first 10 years, or for, and then 10 years later with the second building, and it might be a smaller height and it would be of a smaller parking need and less. It's not, we, we don't have an actual phasing plan, but if you could speak to that, that would be helpful for clarity.
Yeah, and, and Paul, specifically to a point you raised. So we did, we did in our initial application ask for the ability to get a C of O for one building and, and before the other. And, and all this is intended to be, is to give us the flexibility that to the extent that occurs. And the way I proposed the language in, in my red line to Lee was to say that, you know, to the extent that occurs and we're sufficiently parked and there's no material alterations to the plans, that's okay. If there were a material alteration to the plan, then we would have to come back to you as a board and go through that with you. So I, I think this is very consistent with everything we had presented. Mr. Chair, you're right. We did not go through a phasing. This is not intended to be a phased project in that way. However, we do need, and given the, the market right now and where we're going into, the flexibility to build one building and get a CO for that, as long as there's not a material alteration of the plan, which in, and sufficient parking. If there were, we would have to come back to this board. So that is consistent with everything.
So just to be clear then, if you built, let's say, the north building only, because of the market conditions.
Yep.
Uh, then you wouldn't have as much parking demand. So you would not necessarily build the garage at that time, but you would still be required to have the sufficient parking on site. It just may not be stacked. Uh, it may not be stacked on multiple levels. It might be all surface parking. So, uh, and then if you did that, what of the other landscaping features? Would the tracks still be installed in the same location with the people ball courts?
You know, as long as we're building what's shown on the plan, we, and we have sufficient parking, we're coming in. So if we built one of the buildings and the parking underneath it and surface parking in the areas we've shown, and that's sufficient parking, then we wouldn't, we could do that and we could get a C of O for that. But all the other conditions in this decision apply about site improvements and all that sort of stuff, traffic improvements, all that.
So to be, so to be clear then, if there was any modification to that as a result of an unintended phasing process, you're going to, they're going to come back to the board for a, for an amendment to the special permit to, you know, to revise, for instance, the parking requirement until such time as you move forward with the second building, as an example.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, this is to give us that flexibility in what, what is, you know, a tough market right now, but the intention, you know, is, is to build them.
And Paul, did you have a problem with that concept?
I, 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 I generally had a problem with the concept of something that wasn't discussed at the public hearing. And basically, I'd like somebody to run this by town council as to whether we can agree to this phasing.
It's been, so these comments have been run by town council. I spoke to town council earlier today. In fact, he was on here earlier. And he didn't have a problem with those changes he reported to me.
I have a question about, about phasing.
I certainly, I certainly have no problem with issuing a certificate of occupancy for one building once it's been built.
And then having them to come in if they, if they're not, for instance, going to build the parking garage right away, that they would come back to us to amend the special permit to ensure that they're, they're allowed, they're allowed to have the, uh, you know, the surface parking.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I've got no problem with the concept, but, but the idea of phasing and allowing each building to be separately owned and financed, you know, I, I questioned whether those were issues that needed to be discussed in, in public hearing before we could just agree to them in a decision like this. And that's.
That's just, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, that, that's why I wanted to go to town council with it.
I, I think that that piece you just mentioned was more explanatory than anything else, that, you know, if you're going to build one building and get a C of O and that has its own tenant or lender, that that lender or tenant will see that language and say, okay, that, you know, that's what was contemplated. I, I don't think there's anything. But, but again, our application did have the request that we could have a C of O for one building before the.
I've got no problem with the C of O for one building. It's the question of, of the separately owned and financed, you know, and, and I can understand the financing. I don't know why we have to have a decision that says each building can be separately financed. That's, that's, financing is not within the planning board's purview. But whether you can condominiumize this project, um.
Transiting the ownership.
That, that, that wasn't discussed.
I think you could strike, you know, so it just says allowing each to have its own certificate of occupancy if that, if that, I, I don't see any reason we couldn't do that.
I'm certainly fine with that.
Yeah, I think, just strike each to be separately owned and financed.
Right now, I'm looking at, um.
No, it's in the.
At the language, um, in the introductory section.
Sorry, Paul, 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 give us one second in the room, please.
It's in the introduction. It's in the red line that I sent to Lee.
The, the red line that you sent on the first page of your red line. Okay.
In the.
Oh, yeah, I did read that previously.
Second full line after allowing.
Wanted to know where we were. Okay.
Yep.
Uh, but before I go to you, Paul, Alex had her hand up.
I just wanted to say that I talked to Lee today and the one thing that she mentioned to me to explicitly say, and it sounds like maybe you talked to her last week about the same thing, is about the phasing. She thought that it would, um, be prudent to require a phasing plan, that the board would get an opportunity to review and approve if you decide that you need to phase it. It would show which buildings or which sections are getting built, which parking is getting built, what's happening with what's not getting built. Is it just going to be concrete? Are you going to landscape it? You're going to, um.
It sounds like they're, it sounds like from the language, they're proposing to do that effect, in a, in a different way. Not in the way that, for instance, was done with TripAdvisor, because that's not what their intention is. But they're going to have to come back, they're going to modify, if they're going to modify, and for instance, they're not going to do the parking garage because they're only going to do this building or this building, then they're going to have to modify some other items and they're going to have, they're suggesting that they're going to come back in front of the board for that approval at that time. So at that time, they'll have a revised site plan that'll show what the parking requirements will be and at that time, whatever the landscaping would be and any other item.
And all the amenities and what's going to be done versus not done.
From what we're, we're approving.
Okay, so I guess it sounds like that is.
And any corresponding changes that constitute a substantial deviation from the overall project concept approved by this, shall be submitted to the planning board for review and approval provided issues of a building permit for the applicable building.
Yeah.
That's what you're speaking.
Well, I know that Lee saw this and she was still concerned and wanted me to say it, so I'm saying it. And if everyone feels that this is really getting us to the same point, it's just sort of a different mechanism, then, you know, that's your call, but I just wanted to make a sure to, you know, voice her feeling about it.
So let's just be clear in the room, Tim, if we can. And any corresponding changes that constitute a substantial deviation from the overall project. So if it turned out that you.
What if I, sorry, Adam, just because I'm thinking, what if, what if you say, uh, shall be shown on a phasing plan and submitted to the planning board?
I think that's sufficient.
That's good.
I think we like that.
Thank you.
That's what we want. All of us to come out of here with something we like, right? Okay.
So Paul, are you okay with that revision?
Yeah, I think so. I'm still looking at the language that Tim had and I just wanted to go to the certificate of occupancy for that, you know, include phasing language that you just suggested. But I'm looking at each, each building, including the garage, is intended, uh, no, each, each building, including the garage, shall have its own certificate of occupancy, and I don't know whether, whether, whether you want to say shall or may, have its own certificate of occupancy regardless of the state of completion or compliance of any other building of the project. And then, you know, you have, you have your, you just have your own phasing language, so, so I would take out Tim's language about a separate phase.
You're, you're striking allowing each to be separately owned and financed.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary.
Yep.
Okay.
But I, I would include the proviso, provided that, that the petitioner has constructed sufficient parking to set, you know, with the parenthetical, to satisfy the applicable building. And any corresponding changes that constitutes a substantial deviation, you know, you're putting, put, put in your language about.
On our plan, submitted to the planning board.
Yep.
But after phasing plan, okay. Artie, do you have any problems with that?
No, no, I mean, I was listening. I wasn't taking notes, but I mean, I, I thought it made perfect sense on the legal sense of the nuances going on. It makes perfect sense. We have to give a lot.
Gene, you're satisfied?
I'm satisfied with that, that issue, yes.
That's the same language, Paul, in 1.5 and the same.
Right, that's what I was just going to say, yeah. Make corresponding changes to 1.5. And there must be something probably in, in, in section three somewhere.
Well, separately in section 3.4, that's where it also talks about the condominiumization of the project.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, let me, so, so this I would call, okay, just to, for completeness with my red line, I had a couple cleanup things too on page 11, just to clarify, these were summaries of information that was previously in a public hearing. And then you jumped to 1.5, that's the same language we just talked about.
Yep.
Are we looking at your red nine now?
Yeah, and I'm. Yeah, and I'm on 119, Gene, section 119. So the only reason that's stricken, just, and I, I told Lee this, but because she's not here, that, that, it's just, all of these things are already shown on a plan, and I didn't want any confusion as to whether this was something different. So that's all that changes. In 1, 2, 3.
Oh, I see, the, the redlining here, that you've deleted this wording.
Yeah, because there's a plan reference beforehand which shows these things, and I didn't want it to be read that these were a different thing.
Oh, I see, I understand, yeah. Okay, and the plan reference is, um.
Is up above there.
Where, where exactly is it?
Um, sheet TR 00, second line.
Oh, oh, right in the same paragraph?
In the same paragraph, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. And then 1, 2, 3, um, I was just, those are just words there, the, an ice rink versus a seasonal skating area, just make it clear that, what that is.
But doesn't, but there's a provision regarding easements in that, uh, red line in what you deleted that might not be on the plans.
I think that comes up later, Gene, in language that stays.
Through the grant of easement to the town, yes.
Where, where does it show that?
It's a condition somewhere later.
Somewhere later?
Yep. I can find it and point it out to you separately.
But you say it's there, see later condition, uh, one easement, okay.
And in particular, with, uh, that those amenities will be available through the, uh, grant of easement to the town. In other words, a grant of easement.
Yeah, that, that wasn't the intention of the strike through, so if it doesn't come up later, that certainly can go back in, that's.
So we're, we're agreeing that the grant of easement specifically haul out the public use of the amenities.
Yep.
Okay. So now, I was at 3.4, we were talking about the.
Yeah, 3, so 3, yeah, so I just wanted to, I just wanna make sure we got to 3.4, because most of it was cleanup stuff.
3.4 of your red line.
So 3.4, this is something I talked about with Lee. This is really a pretty straightforward thing, but it's kinda one of these things I add to make sure it's clear for lenders and, and investors and the like. This is, so if you have a condominium, if, if these buildings, if, if each building is a condominium unit, for example, we don't know that yet, but if it is, or two separate tenants, think of the, you know, the TripAdvisor project. If there's one building is in violation of the special permit, that's their violation. It doesn't throw the rest of the, the other tenants out of violation, that's all this is intended to be.
So if there's, if you ultimately sell the building in a condominium structure to a single tenant that's gonna occupy, let's say, 250,000 square feet.
Yep.
Uh, and there's a separate, and there are other tenants in the same building, or there are tenants in the other building, which may be owned by Bull Finch at that time, or owned by another tenant that's taking up the balance of the square footage, that if there was a violation of one, it does not adversely impact, and it's not a violation of the other.
Yeah, so, so for example, just to put concrete, something that's in the ground today, if TripAdvisor, you know, was in violation of a permit, it doesn't throw the other building pad out, children's, for example.
Right.
Two, two buildings next to each other, part of the same development.
But they're separately owned.
Yeah.
I know we've had situations where there's a multi-tenant building, and one of the tenants is going to change into some other use. Like, say, it was a retail store and it's gonna be a restaurant. I don't know there was any such particular thing, but it's just an example. Well, it's one big parking lot, and we took a look at the situation, and that parking lot is not being maintained at all, the trees are all dead, and we, so we, we won't let that restaurant come in until that parking lot is fixed.
Yep.
And we, then we get criticized that we're, we're penalizing the other tenants and the owner. What we're penalizing, I don't know who, because it's the owner who's leasing the property and isn't complying with their landscaping requirement. But they're always, these issues always come up with multi-tenants, and have come up in, in some of our situations.
I think this is really getting a two separate, this wouldn't be like multi-tenant, this would be if you had a ground lease of one pad or no, like, two sep, really distinct separate things.
Mm-hmm. But, but who's responsible if the path around the property isn't maintained that, that is promised as a community amenity? Um, that's not particularly.
The condominium is. In other words.
Yeah, in that case, if there was a condo association, would the, the association.
So if there was, if there was.
All right.
So if there's a ground, so I guess it depends, so there are several scenarios. If it's a condominium, and party one owns this unit, and party two owns this unit, all of these common areas are maintained by the, by the, by the condominium.
So a failure to maintain the common areas as required by the permit would be a violation by any of the condominium unit owners.
Or by the condominium associa, by the condominium association for which, of which these two are members.
May I backtrack a minute here?
Yeah.
Don't you have a usual provision here that says that the property will, will continue on, under, under one ownership? Isn't that one of our standard provisions?
That's what's being changed, isn't it? It's 3.4, that, it says, except as a result of the condominiumization of the property, or the property being ground leased, all buildings and land constituting the property shall remain under single ownership.
Okay.
And that was, that was our text, actually.
Yeah, that's the form, that's.
Then, then they're adding to it.
I've, I've got no problem with Tim's language.
Yeah, I mean, either, and then to, Gene, to continue to answer, the other scenario is if it's a ground lease, if there was a, a default of the maintenance, either of the road or of the landscaping, let's say, then the lease itself, and I suspect a lease would probably be registered at the registry of deeds.
Or a notice of lease.
Yes, exactly.
Not necessarily.
But that ground lease will spell out who's responsible for, you know, for the maintenance, because in some cases in a ground lease, in most cases in a ground lease, the tenant is required to maintain the landscaping. In some, in some cases in a ground lease, a landlord is.
Yeah, but there's amenities, if you're talking about a ground lease of a portion of the property, you're saying the ground lease of the portion of the property could provide that that tenant is responsible for maintaining, uh, uh, areas that are outside of the leased area.
Right, Bull Finch could, Bull Finch could own the dirt, and then do a ground lease, let's say, to TripAdvisor for all of this. In the terms of that, you know, for the, for the buildings, for 50 years, in the term of that lease, uh, in the term of the lease between the groundless or and the groundless E, it'll spell out who's responsible for the maintenance of certain things, of the grounds, and under what circumstance the landlord's responsible for the property, and in what circumstances a tenant is, we could require.
We're getting beyond, we're getting beyond our.
Scope?
Our, right, our scope and our decision here.
Okay.
Because, because what, what you're talking about is a contractual issue between, between the landlord and the tenant.
And all we care, yes.
Well, that's not our issue. Tim's issue here, our issue here is you've got a condominium, or you've got separate ground leases for the separate buildings, and what Tim is saying is, if, if, if you've got one, one, one party that essentially owns either by a condominium or a ground lease, the north building, and a different party that owns the south building, and one of them isn't, isn't in compliance with this decision, that doesn't affect the other one. And I've got no problem with that.
Now that, I don't think either of us.
And, 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 and you know, when it comes to areas that are outside of, of any particular ground lease, although these issues. Those issues often arise when one of the tenants wants to change something. The fact is, we always have the right to enforce the provisions of this bylaw against the owner. Often, we don't do it until something comes to our attention in the form of some new change of ownership or, or new use, but we always have that right. So I guess I'm making, making an issue about something that we don't, I don't need to make an issue about, so.
So, just a curiosity thing. Now, now, Paul, I'm not sure if you were on the board then, but Gene, I'm sure you were when TripAdvisor came around. There were multiple buildings there. Is the only, is the difference in what was going, what was being set forth there, as far as the conditions, different there as compared to now, because now we have more of a cohesive landscaping and path area that's being proposed, where there, there wasn't? Because it wasn't, wasn't TripAdvisor essentially one building now, then there's gonna be another building coming up? Wasn't that similar in some ways to what's going on now? The only difference is the landscaping around it?
Well, I think they still had a common parking garage, for example.
Common parking garage, but basically, was the only difference really kinda the inclusive landscaping aspect of that TripAdvisor compared to what's going on here?
This is offering more amenities than the TripAdvisor offered for the neighborhood and the employees. Uh, that's all that I remember, and of course, they did provide specifically for the phasing and had the plan approved for the phasing right at the beginning.
Yeah. It is, um.
I know, Paul, we got a couple more items.
It's 11:30, and I have an early, I, I have an early morning meeting.
Yeah, Paul, well, yeah, Mr. Chair, Paul, Paul, if you don't mind, just one minor tweak on the wording you said on the solar aspect. It talks about one or more solar arrays on the roof of the north and/or south buildings, just take off the word, you know how we like and/or conditions can be problematic? Just take off the slash or, just make it north and the south buildings.
But that's a scenario where they could come back and say, for these reasons, we can't do it.
But the other language already takes care of that. The, the fact that the and/or goes in there means that one of the buildings doesn't have to be, doesn't even have to be a consideration. So I'd say just take off the slash or, and then just leave the other changes, Paul, head in there, and then that would be perfectly fine. The and/or conditional.
Can you read it how, how you're proposing now?
Paul, I, well, I mean, Paul, I don't, I don't have your changes exactly in there. Do you have your changes written down?
It, it's fine with me, you know, it's more a question for Tim.
Yeah, just take off, just take off the slash or. The other, the other condition's already taken into account both buildings, any case toward, basically, the and/or just makes it even easier to just say, no, we're only gonna do.
I just wanna understand what your proposal is, Artie.
Just take, just take off the slash or.
Yeah, before you get into this, uh, so where it says shall install one or more solar arrays as part of the north and/or the south buildings, provided that, he, he's saying strike or.
He, he wants to take out the or, he just.
I understand what he wants to do, I wanna understand what the final language then is.
Yeah, Paul, what was your, what was your?
And the south buildings, provided that, one, the installation of the arrays and all supporting equipment on the roof of such building is feasible after taking into consideration the equipment and other appurtenances, and then it picks up from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
If, if, if members have other slight changes, it's getting too late to talk about them tonight. It, it, we'll, we'll talk about them when we.
Could I, could I just touch on one more thing?
Sure, yeah.
The, so, this is the last thing, um, i- i- in the three items. The transportation improvements, there were two concepts there. One is that clarifying that all of them are subject to obtaining the permits and approvals, you know, for example, from Mast dot, you know, they've looked at everything, but if, you know, if we have all these traffic improvements and Mast dot has a tweak to a signal timing, we just need that accounted for, so that's.
The other thing I would add to that is a phrase saying that the applicant shall diligently, diligently pursue getting the easement, the approvals.
Yep, that's fine. And then a related concept to that is, um, the ability to bond over something, so, a- a- again, if, for example, you know, you're ready to get a C of O, and you can't complete a piece of sidewalk, a paving, or something like that, the ability to bond over that, and, and I had added in, in that as well.
And where was that?
It's adding, uh, it, it's in P, paragraph P in 3.38. He is in Peter.
In 3, wait, 3H?
3.38, so 338, yeah.
What is the section again, about the, you know, needing to get the approval of the state? I, I know I read it.
3.38G.
Yeah.
Three, what?
3.38G. So I think, I think you just wanna add, you know, subjecting all necessary permits and approvals diligently pursued by the applicant, or something.
Is this it?
That's the one that Gene was talking about, and then. Yeah, that's right.
Uh, yeah, unnecessary purposes, purposes approval, which should, should be diligently.
Yeah.
Applicants should diligently apply for.
Yep. Anything else that was in my red line was purely cleanup type stuff, I'm happy to talk about any of them, but I know the hour.
So given the hour now.
Thank you.
We'll resolve to, uh, pick this up and finalize it as the final language, and vote the relief on, uh, on Thursday at 2:00. So, uh, at this point, we still had a couple of other items on the agenda, which we can do either in January, or, or we can, um, do quickly now for the minutes, and then we did have, uh, we all.
Paul, Paul, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna, do you wanna check out?
I want to leave. If, you know, you guys still have a forum, if you wanna deal with minutes and the rest of it without me, go ahead. Otherwise postponing, but.
Well, we're here, let's. Okay, so if you wanna take off, it's just the minutes, I had a couple of small comments on the minutes.
I'm gonna take off then.
Take it easy, Paul.
Good night, Paul, feel better, good luck tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, the, we're going, moving on to the minutes?
Yeah, so on the minutes.
We're provided with this to sign, so, we'll do that in a sec then. So when, September 20th?
Yes, you had 2, page 2 and page 3, page 2, you can either delete it, I can't remember if it was 7 spaces on-site or off-site, so. Do you remember, Artie, if it was?
Where, where, which one was it?
I didn't know what that was.
Where, where, where are we on the minutes?
September 20th.
Total page 2, on September 20th.
One second, just let me get there one second.
There are 18 parking spaces on-site with 7 spaces shown. I, it's, it, it.
I can't remember if it was shown on-site or.
Which, which meeting we talk in, September what?
September 20, and this is page 2. We can, we can just delete it.
Yeah, that's the easiest thing.
Okay, so we'll delete that.
The whole sentence, or the with?
Just with 7 spaces shown, that phrase.
Because either way, we have it in the plan. Yellow 3, uh, I mean, page 3, the yellow, Mr. Fern, uh, Mr. Fernandez was a participant for the business owner.
Oh, okay, because he's not identified at all. But is it sufficient just to say Mr. Fernandez?
Uh, in brackets, a participant for the owner.
A participant for the owner?
A participant for the business owner.
Okay, got that, Alex?
And then, uh, on October 3, page 3, Artie, this is for you.
One second.
Uh, Cobra 3.
Page 3.
Page 3.
Now we're going to October 3, page 3.
Okay.
And I think, Artie, with, uh, uh, yo, but this is for you to confirm, bud. The south building pushed back.
He, yeah, he believes they are trying to make this a gateway to need, but believes it is being forced to the corner. He would like it pushed back some.
He likes.
It's just not clear.
He likes the U's, the U's? What's that spelling, U's, Y-E-W-S?
I don't wanna get too.
The U's are trees.
Likes the U, I don't remember saying, like, likes the U's?
Oh, Mr. Crocker, he likes the, oh, it was written up by, as he likes the U's, and, and, and did you mean to say the use?
The view.
Or should we just delete the sentence if it's unclear?
No, it might be views, I mean, I don't, not that there's a need for that, because then after this, he noted that the views from Satcham Road.
Right.
Maybe the U's should have been views, I'm not sure in that case. I don't think I was talking about U's.
That's true, so what should we do about that? Delete the sentence?
I just delete that sentence, Mr. Crocker stated he likes the U's. I don't, I don't see a need to have that in there.
Did you get that, Alex, page 3, of October 2nd, October, whatever? Did you get that, Lee, Alex, page 3, of October 2nd, October, whatever, um, there, okay, uh, so we got that, oh, and then, so the, the one that we, I did highlight, where you were speaking, and you would like something pushed back, I mean, you said, you'd like it pushed back some.
Probably talking about the building away from the road.
The building on Highland, the building on Highland Ave- on Highland Avenue, that's what I thought, so should we say, he would like the south building-
The south building pushed back some.
Pushed back some.
Yeah, that's probably what it was.
Yeah, because I think you had said that previously.
Yeah, that's probably what it was.
That's what I just said in my corrections.
You got that? Okay.
So now we turn, if Alex, you're ready, page 5, I would just delete the red.
What are we on, what, page 5?
Page 5, yeah, let it be as is.
You mean the highlighted part?
You mean wayloo, the one that begins wayloo? That's red, that, I didn't yellow that.
Page 5.
Oh, in the way of hazardous waste, where they're proposing nothing more in the way of, oh, le- nothing more, should, should that, that's my wording, they're not, this proposing nothing more, I added, in the way of hazardous waste.
I understand, so should we just delete that?
We, we don't need that wording, okay, forget it, and-
Oh, what, what are we doing, what are we doing with that sentence?
At the top of page 5-
We're just deleting.
Just that sentence.
There's a sentence that says, "They are proposing nothing more than what is at the hospital or a doctor's office," and it seemed to me it was unclear what that meant.
I understood, so that's why we'll delete it.
But we're just gonna leave it alone, okay. And then, on page 4, this was highlighted in the original.
Yes, but it wasn't.
It doesn't need to be-
Hi, it, yeah, I talked with Donna, it was just a marker for her, she forgot to, um, it's, I took it out and no, nothing to worry about.
Okay.
Okay, so I, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended tonight for September 20 and October 3rd?
So move.
Second.
Discussion hearing now will come to the vote, Arty Crocker, Jean McKnight-
Aye.
Uh, the chair votes aye, we have approved those two minutes. Now, uh, we had a revision from, um, uh, that was included in our packets for, um, the, uh, the red brick versus, um-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, of the town common-
Yeah.
At the north, you know, kind of the section that's just immediately in front of the actual town hall itself, uh, that seems fine with me, does anyone else have a problem with that?
No.
Okay, so we'll go ahead with that.
I was gonna pull up something to show, but 11:30.
Oh, no, 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 mind, you seemed excited to show it, but we're also excited to go.
I know that, um, that Natasha was very concerned about the substrate that went below the surface, um, but I don't-
I think that was in a different area.
I don't know, that was in a, it's true, that was in a different area.
In other words, you feel like it's, it's so insubstantial that Lee can just approve it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Alright.
Well, it's, in some ways, it's similar to the fact that they were changing the path, the material on the path, and what the substrate was, and it's certain, and we're assuming, and part of this is a path, we're assuming that it's gonna be adequate substrate to withstand the abuse overturned.
And then, are you, are you gonna mention this at all, this communication?
So, uh-
Hold on, what are, what are these for, oh, the minutes?
No, these are, these are the decisions.
Assuming if we approve the, the decision on Thursday, is it?
Yes, yes.
There's one, but there's four sheets, two originals for each-
Scenario, depending-
Scenario.
Depending on how you vote.
Exactly.
Just so we don't have to chase your signature up, that's all. But yours, but we're not, we're not precluding your vote.
I get it, I get it, I'm, I can, I can accept that, I see, I see what's going on. I got it, I got them right there.
We've received correspondence-
You're also assuming that all four, all four are voting in favor, but anyway.
We, no, they're both, it's, and with you voting against.
No, I understand, it's, but you're assuming the other four, all four, all four are in favor, that's all I'm saying.
Well, if the other four don't, then we just throw the signature sheet out.
But, Arty, you're right, so we have correspondence back and forth with, uh, John Schneider, who's the chair of the ZBA, with an expression to make a revision for ADUs by right, um, and to eliminate, uh, the requirement for a special permit for, um, uh, three-car garages in the SRB, I think, right, yeah, in SRB.
SRB, yeah, they're allowed by right, and also-
And so, he's looking to make that allowed by right, because it just takes up so much
Time.
Their time, it's not, and we approve them anyways, so, um, uh, so the ADUs, I think, I'd like to see us, and we'll have to talk about this at another night, given the hour, but the, uh, the ADUs, I hope, Jean, that we will be able to take up for May, in addition to some other items that the, that weren't in the housing plan.
Do you think we'll try to put something together on the garages, maybe, too?
I'd like to, I'd like to.
Yeah, I would like to also.
But I need to speak to John, because you had some very particular requirements for how you, you know, under which you'd be satisfied by right with the three-car garage.
I'd like to speak with him, myself, actually, if we-
Shoot him an email, copy me, please.
Alright, maybe that's what, that's, that's what I better do, because in the way of-
Because he's also gonna be going away.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Do we have a second? Jean, would you like to second the motion to adjourn?
Oh, I, I second the motion.